Okay, welcome everybody to the City of Bellevue Regular Council Meeting for Monday, November 23rd, 2020. Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Sure, Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
Here.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, and justice, in all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Oral Communications. City Clerk, do we have people signed up to speak tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, there are two speakers under Oral Communications. The first speaker is Court Olson. Mr. Olson, can you hear me?
Gotcha.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Hello again, Mayor Robinson, Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and other council members. My name is Court Olson. I live in Lake Hills. I'd like to thank each of you for the enthusiasm you expressed for a strong environmental stewardship plan in the council meeting last Monday. That was great. Special thanks to Councilmembers On who led off the council comments then by suggesting that this city incorporate actions from the Climate Action Priorities Workbook that was developed by the People for Climate Action Organization. In that same council meeting, city staff indicated that they had previously reviewed PCA's Climate Action Workbook, but oddly, in their proposed plans, city staff did not incorporate many actions that PCA recommends. Today, I'd like to help the council appreciate the value of that PCA workbook. I want to make five points. First of all, PCA did not invent the actions listed in their workbook. All of those actions are being planned or implemented by at least one other city in North America. PCA found them by researching on the web, on the internet. Initially, we found over 300 actions. We combined or culled those down into the current list of 168 actions, and we sorted those into 12 action categories. For each action in the PCA workbook, the PCA researchers offered their consensus judgment on the potential benefits and relative cost to city government and to the community. We often added reference notes, too. Then, the PCA researchers prioritized the actions in each action category, indicating what a strong and climate action plan must have at the top of each list. The PCA researchers did this work, and they are no dummies. They included myself and a former city mayor, a city planner, a professor, a developer, a technical writer, a teacher, a software specialist, and a couple of engineers. Because the city attributes half of Bellevue's greenhouse gas emissions to buildings, I'd like to point out that in the building section of that PCA workbook, we listed four must-have actions, plus 16 other actions were highly recommended. The current city environmental stewardship plan includes none of those must-have actions, and it touches on only three of the 16 actions that PCA highly recommends. Please insist that the city staff strengthen the ESP before you adopt it. Thanks very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Barbara Braun. Ms. Braun, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, city and environmental stewardship leaders. My name is Barbara Braun. I live at 13609 Southeast 43rd Place. I'm a longtime resident of Bellevue, and I run my business in Bellevue. I'm active in local Bellevue climate groups such as People for Climate Action and 300 Trees. I'm speaking tonight as a community member deeply concerned for our collective future. First, thank you for your commitment and continued progress on the ESP. I commend you for taking a bold approach. It is very encouraging, and thank you. That said, we are not there yet, as Court was just talking about. The plans still fall short in addressing our largest greenhouse gas emission problems, buildings and transportation in a timeframe that will make a difference. We must all agree, our collective number one priority is to make a difference in the timeframe that matters. To that end, I have three suggestions. First, front-end emissions reductions to make a difference by 2030. Second, focus on drastically reducing emissions from existing buildings, which are half of our greenhouse gas emissions. And third, build a proactive coalition of business and resident experts to accelerate progress. More detailed on these items, on front-loading emissions reductions, per the United Nations, the world must cut greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030 to avoid runaway catastrophic impacts. We only have nine years until 2030. While it does no harm to have a 2050 goal, we should create annual goals front-loaded in the ESP to get to the 50% mark by 2030. This will require a more assertive approach in the ESP, require prioritizing the biggest emission sources, and require more city-driven programs and regulations through land use code ordinances and permits. In the second area, drastically reducing emissions from existing buildings, the state building code focuses on new construction. Existing buildings are not emphasized enough. If we don't address existing buildings, our problem will still exist in 2030. We should make the changes to the ESP recommended by the workbook that Court spoke about, provided by People for Climate Action. Specifically, number one, quickly implement energy performance standards for existing commercial and residential buildings. Number two, quickly establish a hydrofluorocarbon regulations. And number three, develop a bolder home energy retrofit program. In the third area, build a proactive coalition of business and resident experts. Bring a balanced group together consisting of business communities, experts like those from Microsoft and Facebook who already have strong environmental plans and expertise. Add residents with expertise, such as those from People for Climate Action. Incorporate this group into ESP planning, annual progress assessments, and in programs and ordinance development. Thank you very much for all you're doing. I deeply appreciate it, and I'm heartened by the progress you're making.
Thank you, Ms. Braun. That reaches the end of our pre-registered speaker list. If there's anyone on this call, we do have a few minutes left under Oral Communications. If you would like to make a comment on a subject other than the budget public hearing this evening, please use the raise hand function in Zoom, or if you're connected with a phone, star nine. Mr. Hoopel, I see the flash off and on. Mr. Hoopel, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Did you intend to make oral communication tonight?
Yes, I did. I thought I'd signed up online, but I guess.
No worries. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson. Doug Hoopel, 10637 Southeast 22nd Street in Ennittai. Recently, all of us in Bellevue received your delightful communications from the city explaining all the great traffic improvements we were having around the city. One thing I didn't notice there, and I realized that it is in coordination with the state, is that there was nothing discussed or present or future in the ramps between Bellevue Way southbound onto I-90 westbound and onto 405, both north and southbound. If you've driven on those ramps recently, you'll realize there's quite a few potholes in there. In fact, rebar is exposed in both of those areas, especially in the portion going down towards Victoria. Realize that that's state authority, but I wonder if we have some input in there with whoever our representative with Metro or the state is to do something about that. If we watch our weather, we know that we've got plenty of rain, and we are just starting to get in the freezing temperatures at night. That means those roadways are not going to be very passable this winter. The other ramp from I-90 westbound to Bellevue Way would be northbound onto Bellevue Way, that ramp back in the spring received some patchwork, but that patchwork is not in very good shape at the present time. So just to bring this up to you, I don't know if anybody's addressed it to you, but it's something that us residents down in Ennittai encounter every day. Also, to the Ennittai Neighborhood Association would like to remind you and bring up to date as the project down in the Ennittai Beach area finishes, especially with the piping that's coming over from Mercer Island. All of us in the neighborhood would appreciate to keep in mind that we would love to see Phase Two of the development of that park be completed. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. And Mayor, I do not see any additional hands raised for oral communications.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, could you please follow up on those reports about the on and off ramp conditions so that we might report that to the state?
Yes, yes, Mayor. We'll certainly follow up on that.
Thank you. So now, I think we have some good news from you, Mr. Miyake.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. I have one item on the city manager's report this evening, and that is, as you mentioned, some good news. That good news being the City of Bellevue won first place in the Center for Digital Government's Annual Digital Cities Survey, competing in the 125,000 to 250,000 population category. This award really showcases the technology and digital advancements across all city service, and Bellevue has actually placed in the top four for the past four years. Joining us this evening is Sabra Snyder, our Chief Information Officer. Joining her is PJ Rodriguez, Chief Operations Officer, as well as Cello Picard, Chief Technology Officer, all from the Information Technology Department. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Sabra to tell you more about the Digital Cities Award. Sabra?
Thank you very much, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council members. I'm thrilled to be here tonight presenting to you the first-place award from the Center for Digital Government Annual Digital Cities Survey, and I first want to thank council members Lee and Zon, who accepted the virtual award on behalf of the city in an event on November 10th earlier this month. Next slide, please. As City Manager Miyake said, the City of Bellevue has placed in the top four for our population category, 125,000 to 250,000 for the past four years, and this year will make the second time we have been awarded first. The Digital Cities Survey is an annual comprehensive survey that is open to any U.S. city. Bellevue's application for this survey is usually between 45 and 55 pages long because the survey covers such a broad scope of digital city services. The services include things like data management and data analytics, and we highlighted a lot of work tied to the Smart Cities Program in that category. It includes networking and security, digital innovation, culture and leadership, application development, making sure that cities are using user-centered technology, and very importantly, that these services are cost-effective for cities. This year, the survey also included a section on COVID-19 response, as many technology services have been instrumental in the continuity of remote city operations. The first-place award is a very special honor this year during a time when so many city services and employees had to pivot and shift how we offer services to residents and businesses. I'm going to turn it over to PJ Rodriguez, who's going to share some of the specific projects and services that Bellevue highlighted in our awards application this year.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. PJ Rodriguez, Chief Operations Officer, Bellevue IT. Definitely happy, thrilled, and proud to be here speaking to you about Digital Cities Award that Sabra just introduced. As mentioned, these are just a few of the projects and applications that the city has worked on. You may recall that some of these projects and applications were previously highlighted in the October 5th council meeting as they were part of the Public Technology Institute Awards. If you could move to the next slide, please. Some of these are robotic process automation data migration project. This development services piloted the first RPA project for Bellevue. This particular technology provides a platform to automate complex and manual processes and freeing up internal human resources for higher-value work. The utility's smart water dashboard support the smart water initiative, which aims to proactively improve water reliability and conservation. The 911 dispatch integrated mapping application integrates real-time 911 dispatch data with traffic operations, video monitoring, and incident archiving. The application efficiently manages 911 data for immediate response to traffic incidents and post-event assessment by city traffic engineers. And the last one in here is the Universal Design Guide, which was created to advance awareness and consideration for accessibility in the planning events and programs. Next slide, please. And this is our pivot. As we pivot towards COVID-19 in our response, here, we highlight the digital services and projects Bellevue undertook and deployed in response to the pandemic. The first one is launching the COVID-19 chatbot for the public in six languages. The COVID-19 chatbot enhanced our services with its ability to interact with the public looking for COVID-19 specific information. Along with that, we also launched a chatbot for IT help desks. It answers the most frequent questions for our internal end-users. It enabled us to augment our help desk staff and leverage 24-by-7 chatbot for customers to find answers immediately. We also supported tools and technology for remote meetings and engagement, including an enterprise Zoom deployment, which has been in use since May to support council meetings, community engagement, and online gatherings for large groups. This was definitely a rapid pivot for the organization that helped us to continue to provide services internally as well as our citizens. We also expanded free public Wi-Fi to support access for Bellevue's public schools. We also collaborated with King County Housing Authority to deploy Bellevue Connect Wi-Fi to Spiritwood Southeast 148th, Highland Village Apartments, which is in Northeast 8th Street, and Somerset Gardens Apartment, which is in Northeast 148th Street. We also had COVID-19 response maps, including where to find Wi-Fi. It is an east-side partnership to support businesses that highlighted what's open and what's closed, and places to find free meals, among other things. And lastly, we enhanced our network connectivity in order to support an increase in remote work and services. We prepared to increase our bandwidth in anticipation of higher traffic workloads, ensured our VPN connectivity, and both of these items enabled us to transition to work from home with minimal impact. And now, I will hand it over to Cello for the next part of the presentation.
Thank you, PJ. Just advance. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. We highlighted partnerships in our Digital Cities Award application because we rely on them in delivering our achievements. Council has consistently shown commitment to partnerships through your council vision and the priorities you set. Here are just a few examples of how we put that partnership vision into action. Bellevue formally participates in regional organizations such as the E-City Gov Alliance, a multi-jurisdictional entity developing and enhancing common applications such as the Building Permit Portal, mybuildingpermit.com, and other applications. The Community Connectivity Consortium is composed of 28 public institutions working together to meet the connectivity needs of our community institutions, schools, hospitals, and government facilities. Bellevue has also collaborated on projects, or we learn from other jurisdictions such as the University of Washington through its Livable City Year program that helped us with the Universal Design Guide that PJ spoke about. We reach out to other jurisdictions, trying to solve similar problems such as the City of Seattle for their chatbot effort, City of Spokane on their customer relationship management, and King County and other jurisdictions on security topics. We also rely on private partners, for example, Transoft Solutions, in using our traffic videos to identify safety issues at our intersections as part of our Vision Zero program. We engage with Microsoft on our chatbot efforts also. All achievements we noted in our Digital Cities application relies on strong internal partnerships with departments, including our Smart City Plan, which is designed to be a multi-department effort to impact mobility, water, connectivity, public safety, buildings, and energy. The Bellevue Streetlights map was developed to support small cell wireless projects. The new fire inspection system was implemented to ensure more consistent fire inspections and support cost recovery of those inspections. We also just released a real-time traffic map to provide livestream video of our roads to our public. While we are here from the IT department presenting the first-place Digital Cities Award tonight, this award belongs to the entire city, including our community partners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this honor tonight.
Well, congratulations. Thank you very much. Mr. Miyake, did you have anything else to report?
No, Mayor. That concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you for the good news, everybody. Next, we have the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We're on to a public hearing. I'd like to ask Mr. Miyake to introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight is the final public hearing on the 2021-2022 budget, as well as the 21 to 27 capital investment program plan. Tonight's public hearing represents the third of three scheduled public hearings regarding the budget. Joining us this evening are Tony Call, the Director, as well as Kay Lou, Assistant Director, both of the Department of Finance and Asset Management for brief staff report before you open up your public hearing. So, Tony, I'll pass it off to you.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and the City Manager. This year's budget process started a little bit later than usual due to the impacts of COVID. The initial budget workshop was held on June 22nd, where council was briefed on the estimated impacts of COVID-19 on the biennial budget. The city previously held two public hearings on July 27th and September 21st. Staff has provided presentations on the preliminary budget in the past five council meetings and received council feedback. This is the final public hearing prior to adoption of the budget scheduled for December. This slide shows a more detailed calendar, and the topic staff has presented to council in the past five weeks. On October 19th, City Manager Miyake delivered his preliminary budget, which included a $16 million annual adjustments in the general fund, or $32 million over the biennium. The preliminary budget addresses the gaps through cost containment, one-time funding sources, including a temporary adjustment to the sales tax allocation to transfer funding from CIP to general fund, and a modest increase in revenues, including 1% property tax adjustment and increase in basic life support transfer revenue. In addition, development services fees were presented on October 26th, and council directed staff to bring back ordinances within the adoption package. Human Services Commission also presented their recommendations on November 2nd and received feedback to include ordinances with adoption package. On November 9th, Utilities Department presented the 2021-2022 utilities rates and also received council direction to bring back ordinances for adoption. Last week, Fire Chief presented an update on fire inspection fees and proposed no adjustment to the fire inspection fee schedule. He also presented the proposed increase for BOS transport fees and received council feedback to conduct more analysis on additional increase to BOS fees, and the analysis has been included in the memory bank, which is attached to tonight's packet. Tonight is the public hearing, and following the public hearing, depending on council direction, adoption could occur on the 7th or the 14th of December. This slide shows the list of actions required at adoption. As staff previously briefed council, council will take action to set the 2021 development services rate and the 2122 utilities rates, as well as the human services and CDBG ordinances. Also, will be included in the final adoption package is the BOS fee pending council's final approval, and three property tax-related legislations, including the substantial need ordinance to ensure we can take the full 1% property tax adjustment and a backed capacity resolution to preserve city's banked capacity, as well as a levy ordinance to set the 2021 property tax levy amount. In addition, the umbrella budget ordinance assets appropriations by fund will also need to be adopted. This is just a recap from the budget presentation from October 19th. Bellevue is a full-service city, and the city's total budget is complicated. Starting from the far right, the capital investment funds helps the city build infrastructures such as roads, parks, water sewer systems. Then, to the left, special purpose funds is mainly debt to ensure the city's debt obligations are met. In the middle, you can see the enterprise funds, including development services and utilities, who have both presented to council on their budgets and rates in the past few weeks. Then, on the left is the general fund and internal service and other operating funds, which pays for majority of city's operations. All these buckets together reflect 0% growth from the last biennium. With that, I will turn it over to the Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So, can I get a motion to open the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, City Clerk, do we have public testimony to hear tonight?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. There are a number of individuals signed up for the public hearing. And before I start calling names, I wanted to mention that the public hearing tonight, being the final public hearing, was published in a newspaper of general circulation on both November 9th and November 16th. Pursuant to that notice, the council did receive 13 total written comments. Those have all been included in your desk packet for tonight's meeting. So with that, I will get to the first speaker, who is Reverend Patty Ebner. Reverend Ebner, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can y'all hear me?
I can hear you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and Deputy Mayor. It's a pleasure to address each of you tonight. It's been quite a while since I've spoken with y'all. As you know, I'm one of the pastors at First Congregational Church of Bellevue. I'm pastor for congregational care and outreach. I'm also speaking to you tonight as an active participant in the meetings of the East Side Interfaith Group organized by the Greater Seattle Church Council. I want to speak to y'all tonight on, for several different reasons, but primarily I want to thank you for your service to our community, especially in these difficult COVID times. I want to thank you for your work and attention to a budget when there are so many demands in our community. I want, as a person of faith, to offer my support to each of you as members of our Bellevue City Council as we seek to collaborate with one another, as we try to be of service to our congregations and communities. I want to also publicly state the East Side Interfaith Group's intention to establish a collaborative relationship with each of the city council members. We recognize that you are elected to represent all residents on the, in the Bellevue area and not just one segment of the population here. As faith communities, we seek to be of service to those within our communities and particularly those who have been forced to the margins by issues of prejudice. I come specifically to you tonight to stand with our Muslim brothers and sisters who work for the Muslim Community Resource Center. Kaiser came and spoke to y'all in October requesting additional funds to specifically support the women, the single women in their transitional housing unit. These are women who have, sometimes have particular dietary restrictions and seek privacy to practice their prayers five times a day. Bellevue is a diverse community, as you know. We, at least thirty percent of our Bellevue population is Asian and then we have other groups as well. Fifty percent of our community is white. So as an immigrant welcoming community, and indeed my faith community has named itself as an immigrant welcoming congregation, I hope that we can do a bit better. As you look at the recommendations by the Human Services Commission and grant additional funding to MCRC for the 2021 budget, they are excellent stewards of hospitality and seeking to provide services for not only Muslim women, but all people. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do believe I forgot to mention the total number of speakers tonight. There are twenty-three on the list. So with that, our second speaker is Lei Wu. Ms. Wu, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
My name's Lei Wu. My address is 239140th Avenue Northeast Bellevue, Washington, 98005. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My husband and I came to this country more than twenty years ago. We're very fortunate to call Bellevue our home. Our city and region have richly diverse cultures. For the most part, though, those diverse cultures are segmented, disconnected from each other. We're in our own cultural bubbles. We know the existence of other cultures, but our understanding does not go much further beyond that. Along with many leaders of diverse community groups, I believe that a Bellevue cross-cultural center is essential in bringing in individual community groups together. Such a center will be the home, a welcome and go-to place for all community groups to share our values, heritage, customs, arts, and history. This center will help to remove bubbles around individual cultures and bring about cross-cultural understanding. Council's leadership has been instrumental in the completion of the feasibility study for a Bellevue cross-cultural center. To the best of our knowledge, no other government agencies in Puget Sound Region, Pacific Northwest, or even this nation have done nearly as much on a cross-cultural center. Presently, the council's leadership is essential in keeping this momentum going. Along with many like-minded community leaders, I respectfully request that the council fund the conceptual design for a Bellevue cross-cultural center so that our community knows what this center looks like and how much it costs and how it's, it will be operated. Leaders of diverse community groups are very passionate about figuring out the vision, mission, and design of such a center. We also know that this center would not be about realizing the vision or meeting the needs of individual community groups in a segmented way. We need to come together and figure it out together. Therefore, we respectfully request that the city will organize gatherings, either virtually or in person, of representatives of diverse community groups, such as the one at Bellevue Center a few years ago, so that we can help shape the vision, mission, and design of such a center together. Thank you. That's the end of my testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. The next speaker on the list is Samuel Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins.
Yes, hello. Thank you there for having me today. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and this way for the council. I appreciate the opportunity of you guys being able to have this public hearing. I bring you guys' attention to the cross-cultural feasibility that one part of the organizations around the community. Particularly myself, I am a founder and CEO of Beast Diversity, which is a company that works in the area of equity, diversity, and inclusion. You may say we are an incubator for small businesses. I also am a founding board member of the East Side for all that organization in the area. And we are currently partnering with cross-sector organizations and community to support Bellevue Cross-Cultural Center as part of our building the longer initiative. We assist to develop businesses in the community that have the value shared with cultural capital investment by cultivating a culture of inclusion, equity, and diversity at work that serve the greater good for the community. Currently, we have an opportunity to network and furthermore, have the capacity to build community to organizations in the area. We know that the cross-cultural feasibility assessment will give a greater opportunity for businesses, organizations, faith communities, cultural groups, parents, volunteers, and many way of people in the community to be engaged in learning in a way that can facilitate a much more cohesive community. We know that having a capacity to work together toward a common goal and having a way to implement ways of connecting in new world is a way to bring together people of different cultures and different backgrounds into the mix. Beast Diversity, particularly ourselves, are businesses that would like to bring this to fruition in a common center that we are able to have a way to disseminate information, to build the community altogether from profit, nonprofit, and companies as well. Thank you for having me today, and we look forward to have this.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. The next speaker is Matt Jack. Mr. Jack, I'm having a hard time locating you on the list. Can you please raise your hand? Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Awesome. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Matt Jack. I'm the Public Policy Director for the Bellevue Downtown Association located at 4018.
We cannot hear anymore, Asher Ming.
Yeah, Mr. Jack, can you hear me?
Yes, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, can you start? Please, thank you.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Matt Jack. I'm the Public Policy Director for the Bellevue Downtown Association. I'm here with Chris Johnson from the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce to voice support for the preliminary budget released in October and urge adoption as-is. Please see your packet materials to reference our joint letter of support. In addition to communicating support for adopting the budget as-is, the letter reiterates a few points from our September message and acknowledges a few issues that deserve future attention. Chris will speak to those finer points in his remarks. Our position to support as-is was based on whether the preliminary budget met our criteria to keep Bellevue strong. Defined as: ensure Bellevue remains financially stable, maintain current levels of service, and continue capital investments that add capacity necessary to support growth. Our review of the preliminary budget finds that it incorporates the priorities and recommendations necessary to keep Bellevue strong. This review was supported by discussions with city staff and checked by members from both of our organizations. We commend city council and staff for drafting a budget that responds to the revenue shortfall while funding vital services and capital projects that support recovery and growth. This budget addresses our most immediate priority: bolster Bellevue's resiliency against the recession to ensure the city is positioned for a swift recovery. 2020 threw the city a wicked curveball, and you've knocked it out of the park with this budget. But, as you know, hitting a homer doesn't win you the game. To share how we win the game, Chris Johnson from the chamber will share some points about the budget and note some key issues for the city to address down the road. With that said, I'd like to thank you for your time, attention, and leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Jack. The next speaker is Chris Johnson. Mr. Johnson, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Your time begins.
Very good. Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council members. Thanks very much for the opportunity to participate in tonight's public hearing. And thanks to my colleague Matt Jack for reminding us all that our goal must be to keep Bellevue strong. During the current budget cycle, the chamber and the BDA have worked together like never before. And both organizations are pleased to speak with one voice in urging adoption of the proposed budget as transmitted. Back in September, we urge you to do the following on the spending side: continuing investments in COVID-19 response and economic recovery. Check. Maintain current levels of funding for police and fire services. Check. Support health and human services for members of our community who are struggling to meet basic needs. Check. Consider a phased opening of Fire Station 10 in order to defer associated staffing costs. Check. On the revenue side, we urge adoption of a one percent property tax increase to pay for basic services as needed. At the same time, you resisted the temptation so far to raise taxes further during tough economic times when so many businesses and individuals are struggling. However, there are still a few arrows left in the quiver should additional revenue be needed for the upcoming mid-buy or in subsequent biennia to pay for Bellevue's future growth. Proposed budget reduces the ending fund balance to fifteen percent, but does not draw it down further. That may be necessary in 2022, along with a plan to pay it back. There is no new long-term borrowing in support of badly needed capital investments. If the cost of money remains low, next year may be the time to harness the city's long-term debt capacity. At a minimum, we look forward to ending the capital operating transfer of three million per year at the end of 2022 and having those resources available for capital projects. Assume likely grant funding in the adopted budget in order to free up cash at the front end. Be prepared to seek federal stimulus funding for shovel-ready projects. We'll work with you on this. Seek TIFI alone debt service or principal forgiveness to free up additional resources. We'll work with you on this. Seek federal grant or loan assistance in support of the operating budget. We'll work with you on this. Aggressively advocate for the next round of CARES Act funding. We'll work with you on this. The city manager has provided you with a prudent budget which preserves core services in a time of great need without unduly increasing the tax burden, and we urge adoption. Thank you for your extraordinary leadership during the current crisis. We are not going away and look forward to working with you as Bellevue moves along the path to recovery.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next speaker on the list is Wei-Tong Wang. Mr. Wang, can you hear me?
Hi, yeah, is this working?
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, my name's Wei-Tong Wang. My address is 239140th Avenue Northeast Bellevue, Washington, 98005. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I'm also speaking on behalf of the project regarding the Cross-Cultural Center. I'm a high school student living in Bellevue, but I currently attend a school in Seattle, even though there is virtual school now, so I'm at, I'm at home. And from my experience, joining programs and finding activities that I can stick with has been difficult, and a lot of that is sort of because I've been unable to connect with other students in the sense that we can share values and cultural experiences, and I'm also unable to get a better understanding of the experiences of other people outside of my preconceived notions, and often that can feel really alienating. And it's, and in this time, it's becoming more important than ever that we as a whole begin to free ourselves from that restricted perspective, and it's safe to say that there are many other people my age who feel similarly. And so there's this need to create an accessible space with programs where people can really get to know and connect with others of similar and different cultures and feel comfortable coming back to that space, and this proposed center would be built with specifically that in mind. It would it would provide a platform for a lot of younger people like myself to not only feel empowered to express our own culture and identity, but to learn about others and help lift them up too. And my understanding is also that the reason like this sort of thing hasn't already been done yet is because it's difficult. It's hard to create a space designed for the purpose of welcoming and celebrating all different kinds of cultures. And that's why it's necessary to receive support to keep the project going. I'm not extremely involved with the project itself, but I believe that it's really important and that given the proper resources, the effect of a cross-cultural center can be really far-reaching to even younger people like me, like me, and would be great to have for other groups too. So please fund the conceptual design of this center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer Keller. Ms. Keller, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins.
My name is Jennifer Keller, and I live in Lake Hills at 115146 Avenue Southeast, Bellevue 98007. Hello, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members, and all the staff that have worked on so hard on the budget. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I want to thank you for the hard work I know you've done on the budget in a time when so much is uncertain. I'm here today because I love how green this place is and because I'm concerned about our young people and their future in a time of climate change. I'm speaking for People for Climate Action Bellevue, PCA Bellevue, which I'm a member of. First, I want to thank you for the budget allocation, for the implementation of the Environmental Stewardship Plan. This is item CD46. I'm very grateful to see this item, and I see that it is an increase compared to the initial amount indicated in the previous budget for implementation of the plan. However, I do want to say that we are essentially in an emergency situation around the climate, given that we need to reduce our emissions by half by 2030 or face runaway climate disruption. And you know, I'm not an expert on budgets, so I have to explain when I see the $925,000 shown in the budget item for the period of 2021 to 2027, this is the CD46 item. I don't know how quickly that money would be released in the next biennium, so I'll just say that implementation of the Environmental Stewardship Plan deserves at least $500,000 in the next biennium so that we can move rapidly on our crucial commitment to a fifty percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. Again, I'm offering a very sincere thank you for the budget I am. I am grateful to see our city increase our budget commitment to address the seriousness of the climate crisis. And I ask that we make sure to allocate sufficient investment in implementation of the plan in the next biennium to make truly effective progress on achieving our emissions reductions goals. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is April Stevens. Ms. Stevens, can you hear me? Ms. Stevens, can you hear me? You're still muted. Ms. Stevens?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. My name is April Stevens, and I live at 369 101st Avenue Southeast, Bellevue 98004. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members, and city staff. I'm here tonight to comment on your current budget. First, I want to thank you all for your hard work in putting this budget together for our city. It's not an easy task, especially in these crazy and uncertain times. Specifically, I want to reiterate the speaker just before me, Jan Keller's point for the need for at least $500,000 for the first biennium for the implementation of the Environmental Stewardship Plan. I appreciate the fact that we have a line item in the budget for the Environmental Stewardship Plan. And I'm most appreciative of the improvements recently made to the plan itself, which have strengthened it. But if we are truly serious about meeting 2030 greenhouse gas emission goals, there needs to be enough money to fund what needs to be done. We all know that if we don't reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by the year 2030, we risk facing runaway climate change. That is now nine years from now. It's critical we move rapidly in meeting our goal of reducing these greenhouse gas emissions. Again, I ask that you consider ensuring that there is at least $500,000 in the first biennium to fund the Environmental Stewardship Plan. We want to allocate sufficient investment to make truly our emission reduction goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ruth Lipscomb. Ms. Lipscomb, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Your time. Hold on one second. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ruth Lipscomb, and I live at 101 Cascade Key in Bellevue. As I'm sure you have all heard before, budgets are moral documents. City budgets, when done well, reflect the values of their communities. Budgeting is hard work because there's never enough money to do everything you'd like to do. So it becomes a process of prioritization. No matter how great the employees might be in a department, if their value to the community is less than other priority areas, you, as the budget writers, must move resources to the higher priorities. I've heard many times from both members of this council and city staff the Bellevue Vision Statement, which includes the line, "Our diversity is our strength." But with diversity comes friction between people and between groups. It takes a lot of work to meld diversity into a truly inclusive and welcoming whole. That work requires a true commitment to racial equity and racial justice. Yet this budget does not invest in the areas needed to make that clearly stated vision a reality. From my reading of the preliminary budget, I don't see a commitment equal to that vision. I see a continuation of three staff members and a little over $500,000 for existing diversity programs. I see 5,000 hours of training spread across across 1,400 employees, which comes out to just three hours per year of training per employee. In the budget's executive summary document, I see three references to an equity lens, but nothing on the city's website sharing what that lens includes or how it was developed. And along the lines of what is important gets talked about the most, I see five references to Amazon in the 658-page budget book, but not a single reference to racial equity. Wouldn't this year be the ideal time to really prioritize what matters and invest in a racial equity task force to bring our community together around fulfilling the city's vision? I'd like to end by paraphrasing a great woman, Sheryl in Eiffel. She said, "I see your stated intentions, but I don't see the infrastructure to accompany that intention." So please begin building racial equity infrastructure this year in this budget. And I hope that will include a racial equity task force. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lipscomb. The next speaker is Christopher Randles. Mr. Randles, can you hear me?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council members. Chris Randall speaking, 15421 Southeast 4th Place, 98007. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of the new community organization in our city, Complete Streets Bellevue. Some council members may already know us or the work that we do, but just as a brief overview, our organization supports a rapid build-out of Bellevue's pedestrian, bicycle, and transit infrastructure in ways that are most sustainable, safe, transportation for people of all ages, abilities, and walks of life. Over the last few weeks, we have had community members testify and give their support for swift action to address the city's Vision Zero goals through the budgetary process. And I wanted to cap off this extensive but open and forward engagement cycle by expressing our organization's sincerest thanks. We appreciate council and staff's transparency and commitment to making sure Bellevue residents of all stripes are represented in this budget through numerous opportunities for engagement and feedback. We would like to thank the city manager for the inclusion of actions to address non-motorized transportation facilities. In particular, we're happy to call out the Growth Corridor Bike Network and Vision Zero Rapid Build Safety Program CIP items. All of these items will provide funding for crucial safety improvements that will make our streets safer for people who walk, cycle, and roll. We also would like to thank transportation staff for the actions taken outside of this budgetary process to improve our streets. Just speaking personally here, I just read this month's edition of the It's Your City publication yesterday morning, and I was immensely happy to see the implementation of new leading pedestrian interval crossings at several intersections throughout town. Simple rapid improvements like these can make a world's difference by addressing potential conflicts between drivers and pedestrians before they even occur. So I want to thank the Transportation Department's dedication and the hard work to make implementations like that a reality. However, one area of concern that remains for our organization is the precise timeline of the Vision Zero CIP budget item. In the council's memory bank, it's looking like that in the current budget proposal, Vision Zero CIP funding will not begin until 2023. We certainly understand and sympathize with the immensely difficult choices that staff and council have been forced to undertake as a result of the current economic uncertainty. However, CSP believes that starting in 2021 with the implementation of tactical and data-driven road improvements on some of our city's most dangerous streets, as suggested by the Vision Zero CIP project, is exactly what Bellevue needs to meet our aggressive 2030 target of no fatalities or serious injuries. In 2019 and 2020 thus far, eight people have lost their lives on city streets. Although our organization is fearful of what a two-year funding delay could mean for the safety of people who traverse on our high injury corridors, we are optimistic of the city's future. We see a passion and commitment in our city's transportation staff to reach our Vision Zero targets, and we thank the council's leadership in supporting them as we work towards safer streets. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Randles. The next speaker is Heather Kelly. And Ms. Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Good evening. My name is Heather Kelly, and my address is 14704 Southeast 49th Street, Bellevue 98006. Social and racial inequities are not random, natural, or inevitable. Local governments have the potential to make a substantial and lasting impact in creating equity for all the people in their communities. One of the most powerful levers for change is the budget. It is therefore essential to center questions of race and equity in all aspects of budgeting. The budgeting process is where our city's priorities are reflected. With a racial equity focus, we can prioritize our investments by examining programs, questioning their intended results, and identifying how their budgets contribute to advancing racial equity outcomes and reducing disparities. In order to do this work, our city must first make a real and public commitment to racial equity. I'd like to see a formal statement reflecting this commitment that is far broader in scope and provides more detail than the council pledge made earlier this summer. In addition, the city must collect and analyze data to define areas that need improvement. Data enables people to focus on facts rather than personal opinions, and you cannot improve what you do not measure. I am asking the council to use the budget as a vehicle for creating a just and equitable city for all. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Baggy. Mr. Baggy, can you hear me? I think I found you on the list. Can you hear me?
Sorry.
Perfect. Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Yes, my name's John Baggy, and I'm at 1815 166th Avenue Northeast in Bellevue. And my wife, Jamie, and I have lived in Bellevue for 36 years. We've had a business in Bellevue for 30, 30-plus years that we moved to Kirkland, and we've really seen the city grow a lot, and we understand. By the way, thank you very much, Mayor Robinson, and council members for your work on the budget and maintaining our law enforcement budget to a degree that it will be continue to be helpful and safe in keeping our communities and our neighborhoods safe. One of the things, as I'm getting older, I'm 67 years old, and I over the last year, I've felt very uncomfortable being in, out in the streets at night, seeing with all the things going on in Portland and downtown Seattle, and I've avoided downtown Seattle, so I'm just very appreciative of maintaining our law enforcement in the city of Bellevue. I'd like to actually use some of my time to ask a question because I am very curious if our budget per capita for the law enforcement department and line is the same, is up, or is it down from the past? Does anyone happen to know that, since we've been growing?
We don't do question and answers at the public during this public hearing. But staff can answer later.
Okay.
So go ahead and state your question, and we'll get back to you.
Well, my question then is, are we maintaining a budget per capita? The national average is around $400 per capita, and the last, the one that I could, information I could find, our budget per capita was around $304 per person, per capita for our police budget, and I'm just wondering if that's because our crime rate is much lower or because we're more efficient with our budgeting? And if it is, I'm very happy and very thankful. And so, yes, thank you so much for addressing the law enforcement budget and keeping it the same. I make, it makes my, my family, and I'm sure the business community feel much safer, and we're hoping that you'll continue to enforce the law in our city and not allow rioting and looting and, you know, keeping, keeping people safe is what we're all about, and we certainly appreciate your support of the law enforcement. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Baggy. The next speaker is Cynthia Cole. Ms. Cole, can you hear me?
Okay, yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. So I have been following the budgeting process quite closely, and when I looked at the recent set of minutes and the information on the budget, I was very happy to see that public safety and our Bellevue Police Department was kept in the budget per par and not reduced. Because, you know, we, we can see the results in cities that have reduced and defunded their police departments, such as Portland, and Chicago, and Minneapolis, and other cities, and Seattle, which I pretend is not even a city anymore because I won't go there. It's way too dangerous. And my brother-in-law actually drives a bus through Portland, and he says it looks like a Third World War zone. It's that bad. And it's, it's pretty crazy, and I just appreciate the fact that Bellevue is maintaining public safety and looking after our citizens' best interests. And, you know, I've heard a lot of people talk about diversity in minority communities. Well, I've noticed that in some of these cities where they get rid of the police or defund the police, it's the minority businesses that suffer the most. And in Chicago, when they destroyed a lot of the businesses along Miracle Mile, I was watching the news, and it was minority businesses that were taken down, and it was really shocking to see that these people would destroy a minority-owned business, and the same things happened in New York City and others. And so I really do appreciate the commitment to public safety and the commitment to maintaining our Bellevue police force in Bellevue, because I think that maintains the racial diversity that we want to have in this city of Bellevue and to not cause minorities to leave the city because they don't feel safe. And so I think the city council's done a good job in maintaining that budget, and I appreciate your, this opportunity to speak, and thank you very much for helping us all stay, you know, feel safe living in Bellevue, because they certainly wouldn't trade it for Seattle in a heartbeat. And so thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. The next speaker is Jared Axelrod. And Mr. Axelrod, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Great, thank you. Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, members of the council. My name is Jared Axelrod, and I lead local public policy in Washington State for Amazon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Today, Amazon has over 3,000 employees in Bellevue and have announced our intentions to create 25,000 jobs in Bellevue in the next few years, putting us on pace to be Bellevue's largest employer. That designation comes with immense responsibility, and the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead are ones that the private and public sectors must tackle together. This is why we've been deliberate about working with Bellevue's leaders to best plan for the growth that lies ahead for Bellevue, and why I've spoken with each of you and worked with city staff to tackle challenges head-on. The 2021 budget is an opportunity to put many of these ideas and concepts, which we've discussed, into action. And I wanted to share a few priorities important to Amazon as you consider the final budget. First, responding to COVID-19 pandemic is rightfully a top priority in your budget. The hardships of this pandemic will linger for years, which is why investments in human services are critically important. We'd like to thank you for increasing funding for the Human Services Fund, which, along with Amazon's grants, presents a total funding package of $5.1 million in 2021. While we know that the need will continue to outpace available resources, the funding in this budget will help ease the economic and financial burdens this pandemic has created. Second, our shared opportunities and challenges in transportation is the issue I hear most often when discussing Amazon's growth in Bellevue. Amazon puts a tremendous amount of thought and planning into our transportation programs to ensure our employees can get to and from work quickly, efficiently, and without significant strain on the transportation system or the environment. With our growing footprint here in Bellevue, innovative transportation solutions enabled by the city would enhance mobility options for our employees. As a transit-first, commuter-benefit organization, we hope you continue to make investments in transit infrastructure and work with regional partners to bring more transit service to Bellevue. We also hope you continue to prioritize funding to bring about a variety of transportation innovations, including more options for bikes, pedestrians, microtransit, and autonomous vehicles. Third, affordable housing is an area we know needs significant intervention. Amazon believes that all people should have access to housing they can afford, and your budget would make strides toward this goal here in Bellevue. In addition, we're happy to see the council directing staff to work in the work on the area-wide rezones in Wilberton East Main, conducting the Bell Red Lookback, and making updates to the MFTE program to ensure that zoning and incentives are aligned with the market to address livability and affordability concerns. Fourth, in such a tumultuous time in our country, it's important for all organizations, public and private, to make racial equity inclusion a cornerstone of their work. We believe that the inequitable treatment of Black people is unacceptable and stand in solidarity with our Black employees, customers, and partners, and are committed to helping build a country and a world where everyone can live with dignity and free from fear. We urge the city to equally prioritize racial equity and inclusion throughout your budget. And last, your budget process and the public engagement around it is highly commendable. Your budget would maintain many needed services, all while using thoughtful budgeting best practices and without the need for significant new revenue sources or drastic cuts to programs and services. The thoughtfulness and pragmatism you put into this budget process is both recognized and much appreciated. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Axelrod. The next speaker is JD Yu. Mr. Yu, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Right, thank you. Dear Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council members, and city manager, Bier Mjaki, good evening. My name's JD Yu. I live in Somerset. I'm the president of Seattle Chinese Cultural Theater. I want to thank you for your hard work on the 2021 to 2022 budget proposal. I would like to address two things today. One is to support cross-cultural center design. And second, not to defund, reduce the budget for our police department. The first thing for cross-cultural country, of, cross-cultural center, I'm very excited to see that the Gray Report about the cross, about the center in Bellevue, the feasibility study reflect our community's voice well and loud. There's a strong interest and enthusiasm for the cross-cultural center in Bellevue that is a separate from the existing community centers with a strong organizational mission. Given the current context, there will be a demand for high-touch in addition to the high-tech environments and a need for facilities and a programming that we in the different communities together to develop, share experience, and a mutual understanding. I want to thank you, Bellevue Council, that to approve this feasibility study a few years ago. Now, I would like to ask you, please allocate a necessary budget for further conceptual design for the cross-cultural center, which will be a great appreciate by our diverse community in Bellevue. And this will be an excellent reflection of the vision set by Bellevue City Council. Bellevue welcomes the war. Our diversity is our strength. And a second, I would like to say Bellevue is a very safe city. I lived in Bellevue for 20 years. I really appreciate a safe environment. Thank to our great police department and officers. For that, I would like to ask you, please keep that way and do not reduce the budget for our police department. And our diverse community will enjoy this great and safe environment. Thank you so much for your hard work and appreciate for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yu. The next speaker is Dennis Curran. Mr. Curran, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Dennis Curran and I'm the Vice President of Administrative Services at Bellevue College. I work directly for President Gary Locke and I have been at the college for just under two years. In my role there, I'm responsible for our finances and budget as well as public safety, legal matters, and all facilities related issues and capital projects. I'm here this evening to talk about our interest in and support for the Bellevue College Connection Project. I believe it's coded as project PW dash R dash two zero one in the CIP. When I arrived at B C in January 2018, I was approached by city planners and King County Metro to gauge our interest in the Bellevue College Connection Project, which would run through the campus. I've been personally involved in the project since then and I'm impressed by the progress we've made. The college, city, and King County Metro have worked closely together over the last two years to develop a strong partnership between the three agencies. The college is very excited about the improvements this project will bring to the campus and how it will upgrade and streamline transportation routes to and from the campus. Metro has been a steady partner on this project, as has the city. The current routes through campus are tricky at best, and Metro recognizes the immense benefits of this project to include significant travel time savings to existing bus service along with improving the safety of our thousands of students and employees who are on campus every day when things get back to normal, of course. There are four major bus routes serving the college in this area of Bellevue. With an anticipated four minutes of operational travel time savings, the benefits to riders, traffic patterns, and the environment over time will be immense. As of just a few weeks ago, this partnership project achieved 10% design and is poised to complete the final design by next fall, pending funds to complete it. I'm happy to say that both the college and metro will continue to support the design work going forward. And we believe it will be a highly competitive project for grant consideration. It is our hope that the city will do the same and help us get to 100% design by allocating funds to the project. Thank you so much for your time and continued support of Bellevue College and for the continued relationship that we share with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. The next speaker on the list is Valery Goloborogko. Mr. Goloborogko, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Your time begins.
Dear Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council members, I hope everyone is healthy and is feeling good. Being a resident of Bellevue, I am delighted to see how this city becomes a home for people of different cultures and walks of life and congratulates its leadership on the achievement. My name is Valery Golobrojko and I am an immigrant from Ukraine. As an immigrant, I had a hard time morally first few years of my life in the USA, where everything was so different from what I was used to. It was a first and natural decision to find and become a part of Ukrainian community. While community is a vital element on the path of persons assimilation, many remain closed off in community bubble and need help to fully integrate into community in large. State of Washington became home to the fifth largest Ukrainian diaspora in USA with tens of thousands residing in King County and thousands who picked Bellevue to be their home city. I'm honored to serve as the honorary consul of Ukraine in Seattle and be a co-founder of Pacific Ukrainian Society. To help people to get out of their own bubble and enjoy the life form and friendships and serving with people of other communities, Pacific Ukrainian Society started annual Northwest Ukrainian International Festival. Until this year, it took place in Crossroads Park of Bellevue. Festival became the largest Ukrainian cultural event of the West Coast with last year's attendance of over 15,000 people. Many attendees were not of Ukrainian heritage, but because we believe in cross-cultural partnership, we include in festival partner of participants of other cultures and nationalities. This is what we can do on nonprofit organization level to promote partnership, friendship, and respect between people that may have been from different ends of the world. We hope to continue partnering with City of Bellevue and keep serving Bellevue residents through the festival and other means. For immigrant communities like Ukrainian and a handful of other immigrant communities, leaders of which I spoke to, it is a dream to have a cross-cultural center. I encourage Bellevue Council to provide means for representatives of diverse community groups to offer their input themselves. On behalf of Ukrainian community, though, we want to see a cross-cultural center where not merely performances and exhibitions will take place, which is important as well, but where diverse cultural organizations can base their offices, where organizations can be connected and partner with each other doing programs and events together. Resources and most important values will be shared. In my experience, nothing brings people together more effectively than working on a common project, which cross-cultural center will be a platform for. I encourage the I congratulate the progress already made by completing feasibility study and would like to encourage Bellevue Council to take the next step for the proposed Bellevue Cross-Cultural Center and to fund conceptual design with operational model plan. Bellevue is a regional leader in many ways and to take a lead in creating a unique opportunity for cross-cultural cooperation is something that will be natural for such a diversity and its leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golobrojko. The next speaker is Ngaia Sway. Mr. Sway, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
All right, thank you. Hello, council. My name is Ngaia Sway and I'm a college student currently taking all my classes who has lived in the Annapolis area for the last nine years. I'm here to advocate for the creation of a community court here in Bellevue. So a community court is an alternative problem-solving system looking to identify and address underlying issues causing for criminal activity with the goal to reduce the tendency of a convicted criminal to reoffend or, as it's called, recidivism. This community court would occur somewhere that is not a criminal court, instead a neutral area such as a library to reduce the stigma and fear associated with attending this court. The community court will seek to address the individuals brought forth to determine what processes might help them from recommitting their crimes. This would often include top community service. This court would handle many misdemeanor crimes that are often committed out of survival or due to a mental health issue such as sleeping in a park, theft, trespassing, or other disorderly conduct. Community courts have been shown to reduce the use of jail by 35%, reduce recidivism by 10%, and shown to reduce crime and felony and misdemeanor arrests. This would actually lower costs and have jails be much more efficient, efficient as there would be less need for those. As stands, the only community courts in the county are in Burien, Shoreline, and Redmond, and I believe would truly benefit the Bellevue community and make it safer if you find a program such as this that directly address the causes for crime and invest in initiatives to prevent them from having from happening again. I encourage the council to understand that the vast majority of crimes are committed out of survival. Crimes are committed because someone does not have food or a roof over their head. And instead of the criminalizing these people, Bellevue should help the community members from entering the prison pipeline. I believe that a community court is one step on a long road to making Bellevue a safer and equitable place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sway. The next speaker is Maureen Frannick. Ms. Frannick, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Maureen Frannick. I'm a resident of Bellevue and a teacher in the Bellevue School District. The purpose of my comment is to support the use of City of Bellevue funds to establish a racial equity task force. It appears there is no current funding for the significant work that needs to be done towards racial equity in our city. For instance, it seems that little if any data has ever been collected with regard to race and policing, whether it incidents resulting in use of force, traffic stops, or otherwise. It is simply inexcusable considering the technical capabilities and financial resources of our city for citizens to not have easy access to transparent information about the policing of their community. One source of money for this task force could be the $300,000 that the city currently contributes to funding school resources officers in Bellevue High Schools, a practice that is deeply problematic. Is there any information, by which I mean measurable data, that SRO presence benefits the schools or the students? I don't know of any, but it's very easy to find information that SRO presence in general is unfavorable to students of color and probably very detrimental and a key part in the school-to-prison pipeline. A task force made up of city employees, some members of council, and local racial equity groups, including youth-run organizations, could put time and resources into finding answers and getting the needed information to ensure that all members of our community feel safe, valued, and welcome. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Frannick. The next speaker is David Allen. Mr. Allen, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is David Allen. I now live in Kirkland, but before moving here, I lived for 20 years in the Woodridge neighborhood in Bellevue. I'm here to ask you to increase funding for safe bike and pedestrian infrastructure and to do it now. More broadly, I'm here to ask you to invest in helping to prevent Carmageddon in Bellevue. Specifically, I support CIP budget numbers PW, WB 84 and 85, enhancing the mountains to Sound Greenway and the bike network implementation. So my day job is with a company called Bikes Make Life Better. We work with large companies and universities on their bike commute programs. In fact, earlier today, I was on the phone with the transportation manager at T-Mobile. And we were talking about how to leverage the opportunities presented by the new bike infrastructure that's going in right next to their headquarters in Factoria. And of course, you already heard from Jared Axelrod that bikes are an important component to Amazon's transportation plan. Through my role, I've become an expert at bike commuting. And I've had the opportunity to work with companies that spend hundreds of thousands a year on their bike commute program. They go the extra mile to support their employees who want to give bike bike commuting a try. But the simple fact is this. The number one issue preventing employees from trying bike commuting is that the roads don't feel safe. And frankly, in Bellevue, your roads aren't safe enough for bicyclists. Bellevue's been the scene of multiple fatalities in recent years, including a Salesforce engineer who was killed last year. So let's talk numbers. Research tells us that companies that do not have good bike infrastructure close to their offices have about 1% to 3% 1% to 3% bike commute rates. But if there's a major protected bike lane leading to their office, bike commute rates can jump up to five or even 10%. The Allen Foundation over in Seattle is up to 20%, by the way. Considering that just the new Amazon and Facebook employees, that would give you 300 to 1,000 new bike commuters with your existing roads. But if you invest in bike infrastructure, you can get it up to 3,000 or more commuters per day by bike. And that would be a significant dent in the auto traffic. What's clear to me is that everyone in Bellevue is better off if more people commute there by bike. I want to thank you. The first 18 years I lived in Bellevue, you did very little to make streets safer for bicyclists. But in the last few years, you've invested in bike infrastructure on 108th Avenue and East Trail. Please continue that commitment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. The next speaker on the list is Mark Bereka. Mr. Bereka, can you hear me now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begin.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mark Bereka. I direct government and community affairs for ARIAD Co-op and have spoken to you previously. We have a store at Fourth Street and 116th Ave Northeast. Today, I want to echo some comments about the the value of accommodating more safe bike lanes for people as they work their way through Bellevue. Earlier in the day, a colleague of mine submitted a letter for the record and I'd refer that to you for details on our position. But in broad strokes, we're highly supportive of in your capital investment program plan, specifically the Vision Zero Action Plan, which is all about cycling safety. We support the Growth Corridor High Comfort Bicycle Network. Again, this is a planning effort that would help establish non-motorized routes east and west and north and south and on both sides of 405 for protected cycling throughout Bellevue. And then specifically, we support 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 different capital investments, one on 128, 20th Ave, Spring Boulevard, Zones 3 and 4, 116th Ave up to North of Way along Main Street on 116th Ave from Main Street to Northeast 4th and then connecting East Trail to Spring Boulevard. Again, I refer you to the letter itself for the specifics. But I do want to echo the sentiments of the speaker who came just before me commending the city for all it has been doing of late to make cycling safer throughout Bellevue and encourage you to keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bereka. The next speaker is Al Rosenthal. Mr. Rosenthal, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. Your time begin.
I support the proposed Bellevue City Budget as is. Do not cut the budget for the police in any way. The Bellevue Police Department is excellent. No changes to Bellevue Police Department are needed, except tell the police chief not to kneel to anyone, especially when Bellevue Police Department has done nothing wrong. If you need to cut the budget, cut from funds spent on carbon emissions reduction or the homeless that do not originate in Bellevue. If you provide more housing and services for the homeless, you will attract more homeless. Have you ever driven on the Bellevue Highway ramps and seen the beggars? Why is it that Bellevue is 27% Asian and it's almost impossible to find an Asian beggar? It is the drug addiction, not the lack of housing. We often hear from people who have no understanding demanding that the city reduce carbon emissions. From 1940 till 1977, we had global cooling. In the 1970s, there were scientists that were predicting the start of an ice age. In that post-World War II time period, man-made carbon emissions greatly increased, yet we had global cooling. Why? People that have no understanding will claim that due to global warming, we will have an increase in the area of deserts, which completely contradicts physics. Warm water evaporates faster than cold water. Warm air holds more moisture than cold air. If we have global warming, we will have more rainforests, as Earth has had in prior times when the earth was much warmer than now. Why would you believe people that are making statements that contradict physics and the earth's history? We have had warming for the last 20,000 years. When Bellevue was covered by close to a kilometer of ice, that warming from 20,000 years ago to now had nothing to do with man-made carbon emissions. Also, how would you explain how much of our warming right now is due to man-made carbon versus the warming that we are seeing the last 150 years after we came out of the Little Ice Age? Can anybody break that up? How much of it is just continued warming from the Little Ice Age that that the end of had very little to do with anything produced by humans? Basically, be careful before you waste your money on spending money on something that really isn't a threat to the human race. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. The next speaker is Margaret Lee. Ms. Lee, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you. Your time begins now.
Cool, thanks. Good evening, everyone. A few years ago, the Redmond Police Department has hired a mental health correspondent, Susie Crowe, to assist officers in their field. Because this program has been so successful, within a few years, cities across Washington has established similar programs with trained professionals. Thus, I would like to urge the City of Bellevue to consider funding a full mental health correspondent program. This program is useful in numerous ways. For example, individuals struggling with mental health or any structural barriers may have trouble communicating with officers. Officers are often not equipped with the professional training required to adequately assist these individuals. During these encounters, trained counselor could help enhance communication, diffuse tension, and avoid detainment in certain situations. Mental health correspondents can also provide training to police officers, helping them more effectively do their job. From my research, the City of Bellevue currently does not have a similar program in place, and I urge the hiring of a correspondent to be included in this coming year's budget plans and for the City of Bellevue to consider establishing a full-time program within the next five years to respond to every 911 call from individuals in mental health crisis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. That is the end of our pre-registered speaker list. At this point, I would ask if there is anyone connected to this meeting that would like to continue making public comment to the council in the public hearing, please use the raised hand function. If you're connected with a phones, it is star nine. Mayor, I do not see any additional hands being raised.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so now we're going to move on to our budget discussion. And we've had a chance to hear from staff, and I'd like to go around and give everybody a chance to ask questions or make comments. And I'm going to give everybody three minutes each. We'll go around as many times as we need to. And then I'm going to open it up to six minutes each to make your recommendations. And we can discuss that after that. But let's start with just questions and comments to staff. And I'm going to ask in this order, and I I need to send this to Charmaine, my list here. So just hold on for one second. Okay, so I'm going to call in this order. Councilmember Barksdale, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmember Zun, Councilmember Robertson, Councilmember Stokes, and Councilmember Lee, and then myself. So starting with Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have any comments or questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so first of all, I'd just like to thank so many people for participating tonight. A lot of great comments, a lot of passion for the city, and certainly, I think we're all taking notes about what we heard, but really appreciate it, the public and so many residents providing their input about the priorities for the budget and clearly a wide range of issues. Everything from the environment to diversity, especially as relates to the cross-cultural center, as well as racial equity. Clearly, public safety for our Police Department and Fire Department are real strong advocates on that. And transportation, our ongoing battle against COVID-19, affordable housing, and really keeping Bellevue strong, which I pulled from the Bellevue Chamber letter that was submitted to us in terms of the financially remaining stable, maintaining service levels, and continuing with the capital investments, which to a large part, I think, our budget as it stands right now maintains. So two quick questions. First one for Chief Mylett, if he is on the call, which I think he is. Chief Mylett, are you still with us?
I am.
Oh, good evening. I just had a quick question for you. If you could provide us with a status update on the body cam cameras. I just thought of that as we heard some comments about public safety and the Police Department. And I don't know if you can provide a status update on that. It might be catching you off guard, but hopefully you can provide that answer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for the question. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I can, actually, but I'd like to just give you just a little bit of history. Shortly after I got here, we started looking at a camera program and exploring the idea of implementing camera program in City Bellevue. At the time, I attended the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, and ironically, there was several workshops about implementing camera programs. Because I got to tell you, I was ready to go and I was trying to put together a presentation for the city manager, because I think they're very important tools for many, many reasons. One of the things that came out of several of the agencies that implemented the camera programs was number one, slow down and don't rush it. And what I heard from other large departments, I think San Diego is one of them, is they went really quick and the community rejected it. And so they spent a lot of money only to go back to the dry erase board and come back with a approach that included all stakeholder groups. And they went and they hired a consultant. That was number two that came out of it. They said, invest some money upfront and hire a consultant that can look at it from an independent objective view. And so we did that. And then lastly, they said engage your community. Get them to have voice in the development of the program. So what we've done since then, we followed that. I followed that advice and working with other city department heads, to include Kyle Stanner and Tony Call, Kathy Gerla, and Saber Schneider. And I know I'm probably losing somebody else, so I apologize. Under the leadership of the city manager, we hired a consultant. They came in, they made an evaluation of what our needs are, and they made some recommendations. Right now, sir, we're examining the cost of developing a program. They gave us two different models. One was a complete package, which was in-car cameras and body cameras. They're two really separate tools, and they provide two different levels of service for us. And then, so one combined and then one individually. If you were going to go with the camera, in-car camera program alone or body camera program alone. And so we're examining which is the most cost-effective way to get this done. In conversations with the city manager, we actually extended an invitation to the Bellevue Police Foundation to see if they would be interested in partnering with us to fund this program, and they said yes. I received a letter today from the foundation, and they committed to a grant to the city for $20,000. So short term, they are helping us with the capital costs for the cameras. And then in the long term, they also said, look, we're interested in continuing this partnership, and let's look at what's coming in the future, and maybe there's opportunity for us to continue to help you fund this. Anyways, right now, I think we have about $1.5 million budgeted for the program. And we're looking at the monies that the foundation have granted us, and we're making a determination right now, what's the best way to spend our money for the community and all stakeholders.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, that's over three minutes, so I will come back around to your questions later. I'm going to go back to Councilmember Barksdale because he had a question he wanted to put in here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I forgot I was going to mention a question here. So one of the things I was interested in that was similar to what one of our speakers mentioned, Margaret Lee, around the corresponding program, I was interested in funding a program that would help make it possible for mental health professionals to go out into the field to help respond to calls, nonviolent calls. But in talking with staff, I learned that there's a program already sort of in the works, and so wanted to ask the chief if you could share a little bit about that program.
Well, we're limited to three minutes. I didn't know that, so I'm going to go really quick on this. We're constantly challenged in our processes. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. The Police Department, in its efforts to provide better services to those suffering with mental illness, those in crisis, homelessness, we're looking at standing up a program called the Community Assistance Response Team. We're working with the King County Mobile Crisis Team and also Bellevue Fire Department's Outstanding Cares Program. And we're looking at enhancing the services that we've been able to provide to this very vulnerable community. In a nutshell, what this is, is we're going to be looking for officers in the Police Department, up to eight. We're looking at repurposing some of our positions, our civilian position, to hire mental health professionals to create a co-responder team. We have found, and really, the idea for this CCAT program came from several of our line-ups, including Corporal Mala and Corporal Lee, coordination with Captain McKinney and Major Papichok. We went around and looking at best practices across the country. We landed on the San Antonio model. And basically, what they did is they have created this unit where we provide additional training for the officers. All of our officers get a block of instruction in the Basic Police Academy for crisis intervention. Then we also have additional training every year, annual training that we have to go through. But we're not subject matter experts when it comes to this area of expertise. So what we're proposing is investing in about eight officers and partnering them up with mental health professionals, giving them enhanced training. It would be in plainclothes, unmarked units, responding to calls. And the whole goal here is to make every scene safe, provided diversion from going to jail and helping people in crisis get the help that they need. Because a lot of people, they don't belong in jail. They need medical attention. They need mental health attention. And that's what we're looking to do, partnering with the private sector and also with the programs that we already have in place to fire cares.
Thank you, Chief. It's good to hear that the city is already thinking about this work. Couple of things I would want to note really quickly. One, I'd be interested in understanding how this might look as like an independent service that has a solid sort of goals and outcomes. Sort of like, if you think about the digital service at the federal level, it brings in an array of people from different agencies into a very focused service. I'd be interested in sort of what that looks like. And then looking forward to it, coming back to council at some point and hearing about some of the more operational thoughts and ideas and how it's going.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zun.
Yes, thank you. You know, I also echo some comments about just appreciation for the staff in answering our questions. I know that I didn't completely understand the process, and so thank you, Tony, for documenting all of the questions that I had in the call, and it's in the memory book. I appreciate that. And also the community that's come out to provide information. So I had a couple of questions based on the comments that were heard, and we might have to go around because I do have a few more questions. On the comment about the diversion program from one of the comments on the community court, I know that this had been discussed for the last couple of years in terms of finding a location, trying to see if we could partner with the county for some dollars, because there's one in Redmond. I believe one opened in Taquilla, Des Moines, somewhere in South King County. So I'd like to understand the status of that. And if we're not able to do our own community court yet, is it possible to do an ILA with Redmond so that we can send our folks up there for community court? Because I think the more that we really look at diversion programs, it's a win-win-win for everyone. So can someone on the comments, or is it an IOU?
I believe that's an IOU, Councilmembers on, that we could provide back to you in your comments, Councilman.
Okay. And then the questions from REI and Wright-Runstedt about the Spring District. And you know, those comments came in really late, so I haven't had a chance to look at the budget book to see the projects that they had identified as being important to get funded in alignment with more businesses and workers coming into the city. What's the status of those projects? And is there, do you need to also get back to me to understand what level of funding we actually have versus what's being requested?
I'm going to go to Transportation Director Andrew Singleakis to see if he could take a crack at that.
I'm going to have to take, I saw the letter that I came in. They're not in the CIP. And simply because there's not a lot of funding for it. But they would make really good candidates for multimodal impact fees at some point in the future, in my opinion.
Okay, so anyway, I would like to have you get back to me on that one. And then...
Let me interrupt for a sec. So Andrew, when staff comes back at our next meeting, maybe you can detail what that would look like for Councilmembers on.
Yep, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. And then on question number, I believe it was 54. It was about the Welcoming Cities Collaborative, and it says that you guys were going to do some research. So did you look into that and was there funds in the budget to potentially support Bellevue, Redmond, and Kirkland collaborating on this Welcoming Cities Collaborative?
Yes, there is. There is actual funding available to fund that collaborative.
Okay, great. And then...
There, and we'll get back to you. Councilmember Robertson.
What a great experience this budget has been in difficult times. I really appreciate the public who's written in, who have reached out to us and who spoke tonight. And I want to also thank staff. The memory bank responses have been really excellent. So I think there's a lot of really good things that we heard tonight. I am going to have something to advocate for next. But first, with regard to the multimodal impact fees, I just wanted to share that this Transportation Commission is doing the Mobility Implementation Plan next year, as well as the concurrency update. Any thought of doing multimodal impact fees will follow that work. So it's not really something that we're doing in the budget now. The Mobility Implementation Plan and the concurrency work is funded, and that is something that I'd love to have council get an update on first quarter of next year as far as scope. But that's not a budget issue. So with regard to the comments that we heard on a potential task force for racial equity, my question is with regard to the Diversity Advantage Plan. I think that we had funding for the Diversity Advantage Plan update next year, and I'm wondering, what is the schedule for that project? And would we be able to encompass within that funding the idea of having a task force that could then feed in information to the city in general and to the Diversity Advantage Plan specifically?
Councilmember Robertson, actually, I'm going to need to get back to you on the question on the funding of the Advantage Plan. Just off the top of my head, I can't remember, so I will get back to you on that.
Yeah, I thought it was scheduled for next year. I assume the funding is there. And then really appreciate Bellevue Police Foundation helping with the police body cam, car cams. That's something that I've been advocating for for a couple of years, so I'm really happy to see that moving forward, as well as the cart program. I think we have a really good model in the Fire Cares Program where we're sending social workers to help people who have been using those services. I would imagine we can have a similar type approach in with police. I know we already do send police with our homeless outreach group. So we have that model already, and I think that that's one of the future outlines for policing, so I'm really happy to hear that. And I also, I hadn't realized how much we were sending towards human services until Jared Axelrod testified. So I really, wow, you know, good job, City of Bellevue, for being so caring to the people who are suffering so much under the COVID emergency and otherwise. And then finally, I wanted to just...
I'm going to stop you there, Councilmember Robertson. We'll get back to you.
Okay, you bet.
Sorry. I can't turn this off. Okay, there we go. Okay, Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, a lot of great questions and comments so far. I thought I was struck by the fact that in all these commentary, it has six main topics, and they're very exciting. And we need, I think, we having more conversations about this, we can look into how it fits in the budget. But the conversations on racial equity and the comments, and coming both from individuals and from representatives from Amazon, I think is very powerful. I'd like to see us look at some additional funding, perhaps looking at the Muslim Community Resource Center and Sophia Way and a couple of others that would help increase the our resources in the human services area. Vision Zero, that's something very important, bike infrastructure, the ESP plan, and in moving that forward and moving quicker and really talking about the police department and how, you know, what an amazing job it does and how we can improve and how we can go forward and make it even better. So I think those are great. And the last piece is, you know, the cultural, cross-cultural piece. And that's something that I'm very excited about. I know we have talked about putting some additional funding and getting the resources going to look at that greater, and I would support, you know, directly doing that, something at the $100,000 level. But I also hope that we have the broaden, and I would like to suggest that we we have some really good conversations with people about what that means, what the cost is. And I'm anxious to get to a point where we can figure out that this is how we can make this work for the whole city and accomplish these these goals. And I'm just very excited about that, and I think we're going in a good direction. But I think there's some other even more powerful directions we can look at, kind of like what we're doing in arts and culture as well. And this is a cultural piece, so it fits into that. So I'm excited about us continuing to look at that, putting some funding in it now and moving forward. Overall, I think the input from the public was really amazing, and I was very pleased. It's hard to tell what people are going to do. It was very positive and very little even hint of negativity on it. So, you know, commendations to the public for coming forward and talking to us about these very important issues and kind of zeroing in on things that are very, very important that actually enhance all the other infrastructure work we're doing. So good so far. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wow, what a great experience this has been. This is indeed what the budget process should be like. You know, I've been on the council for so long. I've been through a lot of budgets. This is indeed amazing. Because of the COVID-19, I think it's brought a lot of things on the surface and give us real deep soul searching. So I want to, it's like, you know, Jared Axelrod from Amazon said, you know, it's a thoughtful process. And because it's so well done, I have to compliment the city staff. You know, we've done well to address the COVID-19. We have, as mentioned, we put in a million and a half to address the people who are impacted directly by the economic downturn. And I saw, I've heard consistently, you know, throughout the the message, the testimony from the public, you know, basically, we've done a great job. Second, you know, we financially are very stable and people, you know, the speakers, you know, you're the family, it's been happy. And finally, I think I heard the underlying message we hear, which is so so enlightening, so uplifting. It's for the future, for the future. What are we looking forward to? What's the count, the future? And all the things we're asking, the point that's made, it's about people, the multicultural folks, the people from all over the place. It's Americans. It's us. We're all in this together. We're a multicultural city. We talk about 70 languages and how many cultures from all over the world, employees, workers, visitors, people who lived here for just from a few months to 50 years, you know. So it's amazing. It's how do we build up the infrastructure? How do we build that infrastructure to 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 reflect reality? You know, it's the budget. I heard one thing that's impressed me. You know, we look, number one, to the future. Number two, the budget has to reflect reality. We have to build infrastructure to realize our intentions. And we've heard a lot of good intentions. The city has a lot of mottos. We have a lot of, you know, things that we say we stand for. And it's just amazing. And so this budget is the one, the process, is the mechanism that really puts our intention into reality. So this is the right place. I really appreciate all the people who come and talk about this. And, you know, I hear that we need to have people to get out of our own bubbles. We need to be connected, to work together, to share values, and work together to achieve our common goals and common projects. This is what we need to do to realize the future. The future sounds wonderful, you know. We all want to support it, but the budget, budget, budget is the thing that give us the resources, the mechanism, the real tool to make sure that happens. So I've spent my three minutes, and I talk about in general, and I will reserve my other time to talk about some specific projects that can realize, can actually make into reality what we've been talking about in the last hour and a half. Thank you.
Mayor, you're I get to reset my timer. Thank you. So I, there was a question from the public, what is the police budget per capita? And I'd like to get an answer from that publicly when you'd answer my other question. But I did want to ask about our council contingency, how much we have to work with, how often it's replenished, what would be the effects if we were to choose to use half of it or all of it? And I'm especially interested in seeing if we can possibly do some emergency funding using that money for our small businesses to help them kind of get over this crisis that we have right now with the new restrictions from the government, until we get some funding from the state or from the federal government to replenish that fund and hope that we could replenish a council contingency if we chose to use that money to get it out sooner than later. So those are my questions. And again, this, like everybody has said, this is an amazing public process. We feel like we've received so much input from so many different people and so many good ideas. It's, everybody has a different idea, and yet they gel together, and it's very exciting to hear. So I thank everybody for their input. So if you could answer my questions, I'd appreciate it.
Can I ask our Tony Call to answer the question with regard to the, you know, with regard to the contingency? And Mayor, we'll get back to you and the rest of the council on the please-per-capita numbers.
Okay, thank you.
So Mayor, this is Tony Call. The council contingency is $2 million over seven years in the CIP. Timing is whether you wanted to use it all now or all in year seven. I leave that up to the council. From an accounting standpoint, we just dump it equally in each year, but it is certainly movable as you make your decisions through this budget process. So that's first and foremost. You can use all 2 million in 2021, or you can use all 2 million in 2027, or any other option in between.
Is there any option, is there any possibility of it being replenished again in two years if we improve in our economy?
If we improve in the economy, there's always the choice. There's always the option. Historically, the council has had something closer to a $7 million contingency. In this budget, we needed to bring it down to 2 million to deal with the COVID issues that are facing us. So always options for changing it in the future. So yes, that exists. And because you're also already doing a sales tax swap between the CIP and the general fund, if you wanted to use some of that council contingency this year in the general fund versus the CIP, I can find a path forward to make that happen for you as well. The limit is still $2 million. So however you choose to spend it is still a $2 million limit.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So I'm going to go ahead around the horn here. So we'll start with Councilmember Barxdale.
I think, Mayor. So one question, a little question on the community court idea. And I know you probably won't have the information now, but I'd be interested in knowing how that might fit along with the probation work. It just seems to fit closely with that. So if you have any remarks, that'd be helpful. If not, all good.
A follow-up on that, if I can answer that question.
Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse?
Thank you, Mayor. Two follow-up questions that I had. First, Tony, well, thank you again for all the great work that you've done on this budget. Amazing. There were a couple of questions regarding the funds available for our environmental stewardship initiative, like the the timing and the amount. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Certainly, Deputy Mayor. Currently, in the CIP, there is about $150,000, sometimes $125,000 a year from '21 all the way up to 2027 for a total of, I believe, $925,000. Let me look. That is a true statement. A total of $925,000 over the seven years. In addition, in our operating funds, we do have a series of things that occur within our operating budget. So for instance, screening of the fleet, we do, are looking at light-duty vehicles, and as they come due and as it's appropriate, we're converting those to electric vehicles as we can. So there are some additional funds in our operating budget, both on the facility side and on the fleet side, in addition to the dollars you see in the CIP.
Okay, okay, terrific. Thank you. And then I had a question for Andrew, specifically around transportation. And it's almost a follow-up question to what the mayor was speaking about, and potential federal dollars or federal stimulus programs in the future. Are we ready in terms of shovel-ready projects to take advantage of any federal stimulus money that we may get specifically that could address anything from bike infrastructure, which you heard tonight is pretty important to some some folks, as well as companies in our city, but as well as just basic congestion issues? Or, you know, the projects that we know that are on the roadmap at some point, but the Northeast Sixth Street, for example, that project, 120th, I think 405 Southbound Lane would be another one. So I know that a lot of these are on your roadmap already, but are they shovel-ready? And could we take advantage of that stimulus money to start in on those projects?
Well, the only thing that would really be shovel-ready is our CIP as we get ready to, you know, bid projects out. And we do have a document that showed what those shovel-ready projects are. And it's been pretty widely distributed, and I think I sent it off to the council as well. And I'm sorry, what was the other part of the question?
No, you pretty much answered it right there. But I but I think it would be great if we could just be reminded of what those projects are.
I can send that out, chief, but the thing is, I think that for if there is a federal stimulus bill, one thing that we should be looking at is TFI alone interest reduction or loan forgiveness.
Yeah, good point. Right. Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. Let's stay with Andrew for a minute then, because I did have a question about the Bellevue College connection that was talked about. And really also the shovel-ready piece. You know, as a member of the National League of Cities Transportation Committee for the last year, we have been actively advocating at the national level for funding. And a lot of that does include Vision Zero. It includes transit and multimodal, as well as bike infrastructure. So this project is a, would be a really good candidate. I don't see it in the book. So seems to me that that might be a project that maybe at one time was in the book and and was removed. Can you comment on where it is? Can we get it back? If we were to put it back in the CIP, what kind of funding we might be talking about? We have willing partners with King County and Bellevue College, it seems.
So we had $400,000 as a CIP item for the college connector. We spent $100,000 of it with King County and also with Bellevue College. And we got some pretty good data out of that with like alignment alternatives and things like that. But nobody has really the money to move it ahead with more design work. That would cost $3 million, and it'd be $1 million each. And it's not that I think that the project is going away. I think we'll be able to revisit it. There are a lot of jurisdictional issues over that project and whose road it would be. So that, it's not to say that it doesn't have to, it could come back again. And I just want to remind you too that the balance that was in that CIP account is what we're using now to do the South Downtown 405 access study. So in the upcoming budget, there is no money for the Bellevue Connector, but that doesn't mean that we can't continue to work with Bellevue College and King County and bring it back.
Okay, thanks. And then, do I still have more time? Yes. On question number 47 on the 1590, it said that it's going to come back. So I just want to understand, that's the money for collection for affordable housing that we can bond against? Is that timing set up so that it would be part of our mid-buy discussion then? I just want to understand because it would play into how much money we have available to other things if we were able to take advantage of that for affordable housing?
I can, Councilmember Zahn, this is Tony Call. As for when you would consider doing a bonding issue or whether or not that would be part of the mid-buy, can certainly come up. I don't think that council needs to wait for the mid-buy if a large enough issue comes forward that you want to adjust the budget for. With that, I'll ask McAfee if he has any additional comments related to 1590. But we certainly wouldn't need to wait till the mid-buy. You certainly could do it as council directs.
Yeah, thanks. Councilmembers on, I think I'll just add that we're going to be coming back to you with a number of policy considerations about how you may want to spend the 1590 funds. And that will lead to some conclusions about whether or not the council will want to issue debt and harvest a bunch of that tax revenue quickly, you know, or look at an annual revenue stream. So there's a number of things for council to decide. We'll be back at the December 14 meeting to start that conversation with you and then expeditiously work through that in the first quarter next year.
Okay, because that that includes money for mental health services, which is one of the things we've been talking about as well. So that's actually a revenue source for that. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Robertson?
Thanks. I have three topics I want to cover. First, transportation. I just wanted to say I really appreciate the budget with the Vision Zero and the Bike Network, as well as making sure that we continue to move those important capital projects forward and so that we will be in good position to take advantage of grants. I wanted to, the question I had was, we have a transportation levy that has various components, bikes, technology, congestion relief, neighborhood, et cetera. And we, that is not on the same cycle as our budget. So I think it comes forward in February. Is that correct, someone, Andrew or Tony?
I'm not really sure about that one. I thought that it's a CIP program, you know, the the levy funding for congestion mitigation and neighborhood. I thought I thought that that was considered to be a CIP program. Tony, can you help?
Certainly. Historically, we, the transportation has brought forward a list of the levy and through a levy update. I'm not sure what time of the year it occurs, but historically, they have brought forward some sort of a levy update to make sure council is informed about the projects that are working out there.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to ask for when that comes forward. I'd like to look at how we use some of the technology money. I think it's time, and the Digital City Award tonight really showed it. We're a smart city. We have this plan. I think that it would be good to update the transportation technology with a study using some of that levy money. It's not a budget issue for right now, but because we're in budget discussions, I wanted to ask that that come forward next year. On parks, I know that we are doing everything we can to hold these gems for our city as in as good a condition as we can and continue to move forward with our park expansions. I think we're going to need to struggle with that in the mid-buy because there really isn't enough funding right now to do what we need to do for the parks in terms of maintenance and the and the plans that we have for new and improved parks. So I'd like to make sure that I mention that we're going to need to look at that next year. These are a really important resource for the city, but we can't cut police officers. I'd rather let the grass grow a little longer than cut our police because that's a core governmental service. But I think we're going to need to deal with this because we love our But I think we're gonna need to deal with this, because we love our parks. On the council contingency, I would advocate that we don't spend more than the $285,000 a year in this next year, because when we were in the last recession, we actually had a $25 million council contingency. And because the recession worsened, that contingency went away without being spent, because we were down on that many resources. I think if we spent the whole $2 million in the next year or even in the next biennium, based on our votes this year, we might end up having to cut more on other things. And so I just would urge caution for my colleagues. And then I will be supporting a request, I know will be coming forward, from one of my colleagues for the Cross Cultural Center to keep that moving forward. And I will be making a recommendation on restoring the fire training admin as funded by BLS fees. So at least it has a, at least it has a revenue source to support my budget ad that I'm gonna be asking for. But otherwise, well done, everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I think a lot of good questions asked and comments on this so far. One of the things that is interesting, and I don't know how we can, I'd like to get some answers to some of the comments that were raised promoting us moving forward, doing something different in terms of bike infrastructure or, you know, environmental services or whatever, and how that would affect the budget. Is there any implication in that? My feeling is a lot of things people were talking about is just urging us to move forward quicker on things. But it would be helpful to, in our final deliberations, to take a look at what what that would cost or what their shifting would be done in that, you know, just a kind of a quick review of that. Because sometimes people are telling us they like something we're doing, we're already doing. So that's, which is good. Yeah, the parks thing, I'm glad Councilmember Robertson mentioned that, because I think we're gonna have, and this is not the time to do it, but we need to be planning for that and looking at and being careful of our spending going forward, because the levy has run out. And parks is one of the great jewels of the city. And so I want to be, keep that in mind as we go forward and, you know, depends on what happens going forward in the country. So that's a concern, but I would like to, you know, make sure we address these issues that have come up and been raised tonight. And otherwise, I think we're in good shape and I'm ready to move forward on that. I do look forward to the conversations of how we, I think we're having now more conversations about how we implement things and whether, how we're going to, what the budget's gonna be. So, and that's good to get that point. So that's my comments at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In following up, as I said earlier, you know, I want to say that people, few, listen to speakers. We have a trust responded to the COVID-19 very well. The city has responded to human services, to small businesses, and the human service needs taken care of. But, you know, what we need to do is we need to look into the future. And the future means not just waiting to see what happens, but I actually have to take action. It's really to, you know, I wish I can, we can do all those things that we want to do in the future. But the time is, you know, near the 12th, 11th hour, you know, we're close to making the final decision. So we have to prioritize, and I have to look at which ones that will give us the most bang for the buck and that will give us the most ramifications, the most tie-in to all the things that we've been talking about. So I like to focus on, you know, a couple of specifics. The one specific I want to talk about is the Cross Culture Center, because I think this one really addresses the future. It's the people that we have in our city. It's a, talks about, as we talk about equity task force. You know, we're talking about what brought up, you know, with this COVID-19, show us what we have to do to respond. And it's the community that's worked together. So I believe that, you know, we do need to continue to make, take the next step with the consultant report that we received. This project has been, was being on the, under, how I, being studied for the last four years. So it's time for us, the timing's right, we gotta move. And so I know the most, likely, the money coming from it is going to be from the council contingency fund. So I appreciate the staff has been looking at it, coming up with a budget. And I, you know, don't, well, you know, so we, I appreciate it. We're gonna have that. Exactly what it is, what it's gonna do, how it's gonna be done, I think it's important that we do have a product, have a... So I believe the city manager has mentioned, you know, just so that we can say time, I don't need to ask. They were talking about maybe $100,000 be adequate. What's adequate, I think it needs to be something that can really give us some result, some deliverables, so that we are looking in the future. Doesn't mean that's, you know, all the way 10, 20 years from now. The future means 2021, future means 2022, you know, what we need to do to make sure things happen, that we are moving forward. So I would like to propose that we provide funding for this and address the interest that people have raised. And we want to see what deliverables we can have, which means I believe that we need to look at some kind of facility. What needs have to be met. We need to have a community effort. People need to really come to the table to say, this is what we can have to address our interest and concern, to work together.
Councilmember Lee, you're gonna have a chance to speak to that more in depth when we get to our six-minute things. But you've already spoken for three minutes here, so I'm gonna have you stop right now and I'll come back to you. So I'll tell you, it's hard for me to manage a meeting and come up with my own ideas, but I'm gonna try. So I'm curious about the Neighborhood Enhancement Program that we have. I know that we put that on hold during our last recession. And I'm curious, I think I'm right, that it covers two neighborhoods a year, I believe. And I'm wondering if we were to put it on hold, would we be able to, for two years, how many neighborhoods would that affect? And could we use that funding for the park maintenance that would benefit the entire city? Because it would benefit all the parks in the city. That's my first question. And then I am very concerned about our small businesses. I think it's a very critical time for them right now. So I guess I'm, instead of making assumptions, I should ask Jesse Canado to weigh in on how fast he thinks people will be able to access relief funding for small businesses in our city using the state dollars and then if there's any increased federal funding available. So those are my two questions.
Those questions go to both Mac and Tony. You want to talk about the NEP? Any one of you?
I can step into the NEP quickly, then I'll turn it over to Mac. It's $725,000 a year for the years. And yes, Mayor, we did, I'm not sure if we put it on pause, it's a bit before my time. So it was, I know it was reinstated a couple of years after the Great Recession. So as to how many neighborhoods it was impact, I would need to turn that over to Mac.
Thank you, Tony. Yes, Mayor, you're correct. We do, in the NEP program, two neighborhoods each year. And so if the council were to reallocate those funds, you know, the program would go on hiatus. It, if you were to do that, it certainly would affect staffing, you know, as well. We have a program manager responsible for that program. If you'd like some further analysis on that, we can work with Finance and/or Parks on, I think, a specific proposal that you just made.
Okay, I'll get back to you on that. Thank you. And then Jesse.
Is he here?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. So as far as we understand it from the state at the moment, in terms of those additional funds coming from the governor's office, we should start to see the application or understand the application process for that in about three to four weeks. And then get the addition, start getting the funds into the businesses' bank accounts about another four to six weeks after that.
Ooh, a month and a half to two months is a really long time when you're barely making it for a small business. Have you gotten any feedback from the small businesses in our city on this?
Not on the specific timing of this.
But on the need.
On the need, yes. There is at least another half million dollars worth of need for our small businesses in Bellevue in terms of grant requests.
Wow. Wow. Okay. All right, thank you. So I will go through the list. You don't have to comment or question if you don't have any, but we'll start with Councilmember Barxdale.
Further comments or questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
No further questions at this time.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, actually, I did have a question. I think one of the other council members brought this up. You know, when I think about the trade-offs, they all affect people. And I think about our revenue risk and really, how do we invest in partnerships so that we can pull money or find partners and use our money as seed money, right? Whether that's Human Services and Amazon being a great partner. I just think that, I wonder on the small business part, whether there are any of the businesses that would also, would be willing to have some partnership and help some of these small businesses in need in this bridge time period? Or if we were to make some money available, can it just be more of a bridge to funding coming in from other sources? I'm just wondering if those discussions have already been happening and if that's possible. Maybe that's not exactly the budget question, but it seems like it's related to this budget.
Councilmembers on, in terms of partnering with respective business, I don't know. I'm looking to both Jesse and Mac if there's anything, or any of the other LT members with respect to that question. And if not, we will get back to you with a, with some kind of assessment. Mac, do you?
Yes, City Manager Mac, I think it'd be best if we got back to the council. We are always looking for opportunities for outside funding sources and to leverage our city funds to get more bang for the buck, so to speak. So we can certainly prepare a list of how that's been done in the past and what we'll look to do over the next biennium.
I would also add to that, there are, I know at least one CIP project where we leverage for grants, for, you know, grant opportunities for purposes like that.
Okay. And then my, and then my other question, I think this one also came up previously. The Bellevue Diversity Advantage Plan, I know that that was a plan that I took with me when I took my racial equity training and, at the National League of Cities. And it's a much broader plan to look at any number of diversity components. And I don't recall that it actually has anything specifically about racial equity. So is, can someone comment on that plan? I don't recall that that was the focus at all. So I think it's two different things here.
You know, Councilmembers on, we do have, I know we did take a look at that. I don't have it off the top of my head. We'll provide an answer back to you and the council next week.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I think I'm good with questions right now. I'll just wait for the six-minute period to speak again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Likewise.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
I do have another one. It's the transportation technology, specifically autonomous vehicle. I think that we have some money that's provided for that. The question is, what specific projects are we looking at and what would it be? And my feeling is that this would actually also address lots of other things that have been discussed, like Vision Zero, such as another one is, because in developing autonomous vehicle, we need to develop the technology. And the technology would actually be used for Vision Zero safety and for climate change, for environment. I think these are all part of, and piece parcel, working with Smart City Initiative. I know the city has a very, as we heard earlier, you know, the award for first place in the, you know, Smart City budgets. And so I want to be sure that we have specific tie-ins and we take advantage of the opportunity in federal government. You know, federal government DOT are looking for a technology to improve infrastructures, to address, to address the future, the growth and congestion. And so I want to be sure that we have the funding necessary, the mechanism in the next year or two or three moving forward, until we get to another budget, so that we are not going to be waiting, sitting here. So maybe, Andrew, you know, I see you here, you might want to say a word or two.
Well, I mean, we do have about $150,000 a year in the levy that we use for partnerships on smart technology. And we've been trying for a while. We're definitely keeping our eye on the ball in that regard. And I believe we have a briefing set up with you tomorrow to talk about the latest that we've been talking about. And I talked with Sabra, and sometime next year, it'd be good to have a smart cities update for the council to talk about the things that we have been doing.
Yeah, this also addresses the private-public partnership thing. You know, I think we have great opportunities in this area, the technology of Amazon, Microsoft, they are here in the backyard. But the point is that the facility, the city has to provide the leadership, and we have to facilitate this process. So thank you very much, Andrew. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee. And I guess my last question back to Jesse is, do we have any funds? And if we did, do you think we could do some sort of a bridge funding for our local small businesses that would be reimbursed by the state? If, do you think that's a possible scenario? And if so, do you think we have any funds that we could use for that?
And Mayor, I would say we'd have to get back to you on that question. Grants to small businesses are extremely complicated in Washington State, so we'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. So what we're gonna launch into now is I'm gonna give each council member six minutes to kind of do a pitch of what they would like to see with this budget. And hopefully, six minutes is enough time. And then we can go around and make, ask questions or make comments. And we'll just see how we do with this. And we'll start with Councilmember Barxdale.
Thank you, Mayor. So Councilmember Sun and I propose a budget amendment requesting $150,000 for the biennium in support of racial equity through a Bellevue Centers Communities of Color Initiative. As I mentioned in my response to public comments a few weeks ago, as a city and community, we must engage in these conversations related to race and racial equity. Our community is over 50% minority. And to me, our vision statement acknowledging that diversity is our strength, strength, and that we welcome the world means that we address the needs of those BIPOC, Black Indigenous people of color in our community who do not feel the sense of belonging that we aspire for everyone in our community to fill. We've heard the need from our community, and we've heard that traditional models of community engagement, despite best intent, often fail to provide authentic and safe spaces for discussions around issues of race and equity. The Bellevue Centers Communities of Color Initiative would allow for creating a communities of color coordinating team comprised of community members that would lead planning and implementation, instilling empathy, trust, and awareness through these necessary conversations, building racial literacy and skills across public, private, and nonprofit stakeholder groups throughout our community, and fostering community partnerships toward co-creating recommendations for actions with racial equity outcomes. Ask for your support on this amendment so that we can begin this urgent and important work in our community. And I'd like to leave some time for Councilmembers on to make remarks.
Okay, Councilmembers on, would you like to go now and tag team here, or do you want to wait?
I could add my comments here, and then we'll have to figure out the six minutes, if that's okay.
Sure.
So I would say that this is well past time for us to take this step. As we've heard in comments, right, we need to make a commitment and a pledge to racial equity. And we need to center the voices of those who have not always been heard in our community. And we need to co-create what racial equity means in our community with the community. So, you know, while I applaud the city for looking at our use-of-force review, that is only one component of this work. Racial equity is so much more. And I think it aligns really well with the Cross Cultural Center, which is also being proposed, that I think is in alignment with this work that we need to do, right? This is really how we look at a scan of our policies of equity and looking at the policies we already have in place in a number of areas. like ESI, like economic development, like COVID, affordable housing. But I think there are other areas where we don't have racial equity policies yet, and this is one step in that direction. So this is our co-proposal.
Okay, great. Councilmember Barxdale, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I have a different proposal, should I wait for it to come back around or?
Nope, you're still in your six minutes.
Okay, I propose a budget amendment requesting $150,000 a year, $300,000 total in support of having a senior policy professional, such as an analyst in the council office. I appreciate the work that staff and leadership team do to respond to questions and policy issues we raise as council to ensure our community has the services they need. In many cases, our requests require departmental staff to pull away from their current priorities to do preliminary research and analysis on our requests that are beyond the current scope of priorities or our community issues we need to better understand. As council members, we often do not have the context and insights that staff has on any given issue, nor the time as a part-time council to do sufficient research and analysis. This results in a dance to either avoid the eight hour limit or figure out how to get, bring the, how to bring it to council to pass that eight hour rule. Having a senior policy professional in the council office who could do preliminary research and analysis on policy issues and ideas raised by council would enable council to more deeply understand policy issues and the viability of policy ideas while reducing the impact on departmental staff. This in turn helps improve the efficiency of departmental, departmental staff and policy making. So ask for your support there. How am I looking on time, Mayor?
You've got one, one more minute.
Okay, I propose a budget amendment requesting $150,000 a year in support of enhancing our business intelligence capability. We value understanding the needs of our community and ensuring our services are responsive to those evolving needs currently.
Councilmember Barxdale, I know you're trying to respect the time, but you're speaking so quickly, I'm not sure we can absorb it all. So why don't we quit here and let you have another bite at this?
Sounds good, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items, one, I'm not sure we have a cost associated with it yet, and that was, came up during our last meeting regarding having a tag associated with the ESI, so Technical Advisory Group. I have not received any numbers on that yet, so I'm not sure if there's a cost associated with having a tag. But I would like to propose that we add that as a potential amendment. But, you know, first would have to wait to see what that total cost might be. Unless, Tony, you have a thought on that right now, but we can wait on that, go ahead.
I don't have a cost for you today, I think it depends on scope and size and frequencies. I think there's probably some work that still needs to be done in that space.
Okay, great, so we'll add that one for now. The second one is in, in respect to the great work that the Bellevue Chamber and the Bellevue Town, Town Association has done in our community. I can't think of, other than the great work that our city has done, two groups that have done so much to keep a lot of small businesses alive, restaurants going in our city during this pandemic. As Jesse and Mac have presented to us previously, they've helped with everything from helping to fill out forms for loans and grants, to helping distribute PPE, to helping us get off the ground with the great outdoor dining on Main Street. So a modest request, but a request of about $40,000, so $20,000 going to each organization to help them continue to do the great work that they're doing in our, in our, in our city, especially to help with the small business community, restaurants, et cetera, that really need that additional help from these two tremendous organizations.
And that's a one-time thing?
That is a one-time thing.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and actually, before, we wanted, in case we're not able to comment on it next round, do fully support the Cross Cultural Center that I believe Councilmember Lee will be speaking to a little bit later, and then also fully in support of Councilmember Robertson's great idea to fund the training admin through, through the, through the fee structure there. So just wanted to mention that as well, thank you.
Okay, we will have a chance to comment and ask questions of each other's proposal here.
Okay, great, wasn't sure, thank you.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. I think it is very crucial to keep Bellevue strong, but I would add that we want to position Bellevue to be even stronger. So when I think about the areas that I think are still a bit of a gap for us, you know, I think 1590 addresses affordable housing, human services with some partnerships, hopefully the small business grants, public safety, we're keeping those funds. So for me, the three areas are the racial equity that we've already talked about. I support the Cross Cultural Center. Transportation and the environment. So I want to talk about first on the transportation. I recommend that for Vision Zero, that we take the $2.5 million and we started in 2021. There's an urgency to this because we are seeing that, that cars are driving faster during COVID. We've had incidences on our streets with folks being harmed. We can't wait. So this money needs to start, it says rapid build, and it needs to be rapid. So I would recommend that the, the $2.5 million actually start in 2021 and be spread over the seven years. On the growth corridor, I also think that that one has urgency, and we heard that from the speakers. So instead of only having $100,000 in 2021, I think we should have the $500,000 every year for the next three years. And then hopefully, if we can get additional funding or some partners, that that money will go farther for us. So I would look forward to us really looking for more partners to do some of that work. And really, let's be heroes for zero. In addition, I want to make sure that we have money in there, so we are actually going to get some annual reporting on our Vision Zero achievements. So that's one of my asks. And then on the Bellevue Connection, Bellevue College, I do think it's important to make sure that this highly competitive project that may be eligible for grant funding is at least in our CIP, even if we're only going to put a modest $50,000 or $100,000 into the budget for that. And we continue to work with King County Metro and Bellevue College, and maybe we find some other partners, because Bellevue College is, is creating amazing graduates for our community. So that's one. And then on the ESI, I think that the time is now to make a difference that's going to matter the most. 2030 is going to be here before we know it. And although I do see that there's some modest amounts of funds in there with $150,000, I don't think that's nearly enough. And I would request that we actually create a line item for rapid early win actions of $100,000 for each year that really looks at the actions that we already know exists, right? As the speakers that came and talked to us and gave us the workbooks, we're not actually trying to reinvent anything, these different 160 tools are already available. So let's make sure that we have funds to be able to move quickly on these actions. And I would just say that if we are short on money, I would rather spend the money on actions than resources of staff to staff a tag or other committees where that's money that we could be putting into the actual actions that we're trying to do. So those are my pieces. And then I think I mentioned the Cross Cultural Center that I support, and I, so anyway, that, that's where I am, thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks, I just have one small budget amendment that I would like staff to prepare for the December 7th meeting. And that is to restore the fire, the training admin to the fire department. This was a position that was not cut in the last recession, when we cut a lot of positions for the city. And we had fewer positions then than we do today. With the upcoming Fire Station 10 and needing to hire 13 new firefighter paramedics to, to staff that, and with the high rate of retirements that we have right now, we're going to need this position funded more than ever. Because we'll be onboarding new people, we're going to be training them up, et cetera. And training helps all of these people, all of the members of the department do better and provide better for the people of Bellevue who are in crisis when they see them. So that is an $80,000 a year add. Because capital, or because city council contingency is typically a one-time money funding, I am suggesting that we change the basic support transport fee to the $950 level, which puts us just above median for the area, certainly not anywhere near the highest, because that will be the funding source to cover this cost. And so I will be asking my colleagues to support that. I do support the cross-cultural money, which is again, one-time funding from the council contingency. And I know we're going to have a chance to ask questions of our colleagues later, but I'm hearing a lot of, a lot of different, pretty sizable amendment requests, but I don't see where those are going to be funded from. And if we're going to be funding them from existing revenue, which is all we have, we either need to raise revenue to fund them, or we need to cut something else. So I would ask that when my colleagues are bringing forward amendments, that we identify where it's coming from, because it can't all come from council contingency, there isn't enough money there, and that is really one-time money. It's not ongoing money for new FTEs that are going to stay with us. So that's the questions I'll be asking my colleagues. So just get ready, when it's my turn to ask questions of all of you when we go around again. We need to identify what you're going to cut to fund that, thank you. Or what new revenue are you going to, going to advocate for, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of good stuff's already been put forward. I do think that one of the things we could do in the racial equity area is to look at the funding for the Muslim Community Resource Center. It's not a lot of money, I think Sophia Way could use some resources also. And I think that would send a good signal to the community and do something that's very, very important in this time. I mean, they're dealing a lot with, and it's a large part of the minority community. And, and they're really dealing with a lot of issues with COVID and the whole disruption of the economy. And that would be a big boost there. So I don't know how much that is offhand, but I would really think that's, that's something we could do that would really kind of actually put a good, a good, a good shining light on that we are serious about the racial equity and, and we're willing to look outside the line sometimes to, to different places and look at, go forward on that. On the $150,000, a proposal on racial equity resources, I support that completely. Again, that, that's something that I think has, we talk a lot about it, but in terms of actually working on it, we can do better, and that's not a lot in the whole, you know, several million dollar budget. And I think that would be important. The last thing I wanted to mention is, in term, and been a lot of other comments made. But again, as I said earlier, I think the $100,000 and coming from the council contingency for continuing, looking at the Cross Cultural Center. And this is strictly looking at, you know, the research and going on that. And, but I also want to encourage a robust discussion this coming year, because I think there are multiple ways to accomplish that goal. Building a, you know, a cultural tatahuchi center is not necessarily the best way to go. I think there are a lot of options, so. And I think that's why it's important to have this money and have the consultants look at that. So I feel very strongly about that one. Otherwise, there are a lot of other things that have been put out here, and I think we need to have some information back from staff about what the cost would be on this. You know, the, so there are a lot of, obviously, a lot of needs that are coming up that we haven't addressed. So I, I'm, you know, I, I think there's just a lot to be looked at, and it's, it's hard to do it with all the discussion we're having now and put it together in a consistent way. So I'm looking forward to some follow-up on this. And I think at this, the meeting on December 7th is when we could actually bring these pieces together and start talking about in a coherent way how this would, what would be, how we fit it into the budget, what would be some changes or looking at things differently at that time. But this is a great conversation, it's just not a conversation that's going to actually answer any questions on things, so. But those are the two things, the three things that I'm really interested in putting some money into at this point. And, you know, having further conversations on this. And look forward to getting information back from staff on a number of these. And then doing the hard part of figuring out how to deal with it. We do have a contingency, and I know we don't want to spend it all in a short time period, but actually, this is a time to act, because if we keep, we have a unique opportunity in this particularly weird situation to make great advances in Bellevue, but it means we have to make some investments now and not think that, well, you know, maybe we need to put some of this aside for three years down the line. Three years down the line will be completely different. And I think we can, we need to address things that are urgent now, including things to help small businesses or small, or, you know, individuals in the community. So I think, I think it's a good process, it's, it's, and you know, making budgets is like, it's kind of messy, but I think it's, we made some advances, and so I'm ready to have some more conversations about that. And, but we need to get some more information back on what this all means and how we could put it together.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I'm glad that there's so many, you know, great ideas and enthusiasm about, you know, what can be better for our city and this, the future. My concern is, which is, Councilmember Robertson mentioned, you know, I didn't realize we got all this money come from somewhere, I don't know where it is. But I think that's the first question we need to ask staff. And we only have one week, a couple of weeks, we have to make the decision. I'm not sure if that can all happen. And, you know, only thing I could say is that I support a lot of these great ideas, specifically the racial equity, you know, issue. The question is, you know, the, I support the multicultural center as a priority, because this addresses a lot of the questions that's raised, a lot of the project that we want to do. You know, a lot of things that we want to figure out how to move forward, you know. So it requires a community, and it's really all interconnected. You know, the multicultural center or the cross-cultural center is really the total of all these communities that we are talking about, we are addressing in parts and pieces. And we want to have a conversation, you know, have a task force or whatever. It's more discussion, have staff doing it. But I believe the cross-cultural center, the idea is actually making it happen of all the people with different ideas, how do we get them all together and solving a common problem? And the problem that is the what we're talking about, that's why we're struggling to see what, how can we handle, address, solve, manage these problems. So I believe that the cross-cultural center is really the mechanics, the everyday hands-on way of people getting together, sharing their values, sharing their strengths. And this is what we are all talking about. And so, yeah, I'm not going to speak for, you know, all the, how much money it takes, what does it really take? It's the priority we have to be making, you know, I think ultimately, that's all we have to do. And when I talk about, well, there's a part of money, let's just do it, you know, I would love to do all those things. But I don't think that's, you know, that's responsible. And so I would say, ask our colleagues, my colleagues, each of you, got to choose and pick, got to prioritize. And if we believe, you know, cross-cultural center can provide the basis, foundations, the mechanism, the infrastructure, the machines, the people that actually can handle, manage, and talk about all these situations. But this is, to me, that is the beginning, you know, of the actual solution, not just more talk. Yes, we need more information, we need more knowledge, we need, but how do you get it, you know? So the city is in a position to show leadership, to facilitate, but we got to do those things. So I, you know, I don't, the staff came up with some money, that's fine, they provided some work scope, that's fine. But I just want to be sure, the bottom line is, we all understand that at the end of the study, whatever, when we spend the money, we hope that we don't need to spend all the money. We will have a We will have a product, a deliverable that actually shows that all the different groups, different multicultural groups. All the people living in Bellevue have conversation and dialogue. They discussed it and they all agree, what do they think are the needs to bring people together? So that we can share our strength and share our experience, share our ability to solve all these problems. So we need to have that concept, the product. Two, we can know, in order to do that, what do we need to have? What kind of project, what kind of, what, what does it look like? You know, how do we do that? Okay? And the group, the community will make, hopefully will come up with a solution. Three, what are the costs, if they cost anything at all? And then out of that, we know how much is public, how much is private. I hope the pop, I hope the private sector was a gee, what a great deal. And all the community members, everybody will say, we're stepping. It's truly a community, community center, truly a cross culture community center where these things can actually happen. Then the city council can decide, yes, we know how to get that, we know what's the cost, what no one looks like. Then we know what's the next step. That's what I'm advocating. All the others are great, but, you know, and the second point I want to make is. So I appreciate some council member supporting because I've been talking about this for a long time, so. The other one is the transportation, because the technology, that's another thing, is an ability. It's something that can enable us to actually tackle these problems, problems of. Model, multi model transportation system. How do we make it safe? How do we make transit? How do we make pedestrians, how do we bicycle? All these things, how we make it work together compatibly through technology, through artificial intelligence. And so, you know, by doing that, we can actually improve our environment. We have, we can address our climate change. So I believe that's really the. The, the, the universal way of solving the problem that we're doing.
Okay, your time's up, Councilmember Lee.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like. To see us use our council contingency and invest $100,000. In creating a cultural center technical advisory group. That would meet for a year and have staff support to come up with the citing, the scale, the goals, the purpose, the budget. And the preferred concept of a cultural center. And so that would be a one year, one time. Spend on of 100,000, of 100,000 from the council contingency. And then we can at the biennium. Look at the recommendations and budget for implementation or whatever the next step is. And then I'd also like to take 100,000 from the council contingency and put it toward an racial equity. Technical advisory group to help guide us in policy that maybe we need to change. Recommendations, setting goals for our city. And that would be a year process as well, and that would be staffed. Let's see. I think those are the two things. That I wanted. I thought there was one more. Just hold on for a sec. Well, oh, yeah, and then I would like to prioritize the rapid implementation. Of the Vision Zero projects and our Ped Bike Program because. It's, there's nothing more dangerous than having only partial bike infrastructure in your city. It just, it runs out on you and it's really scary and I just, I would like to do whatever we need to do to move that to the top of the list. So those were, those are my asks. So now what we're going to do is. We're going to go around again, I'm going to give each person three minutes. I would like you to comment on what of your council members you. You support or if you have questions. And we will give everybody a chance to get their questions answered from each council member as well, if you want to address them. But I'd like to limit it to three minutes if we can, each person. It will take as long as we need to go around. So councilmember, so I'm trying to get kind of a consensus of if you. Support the recommendations of your, or the asks of your fellow council members or not. And so that at the end of the night, staff has an idea of what the consensus is and they can bring it back at our next meeting. So Councilmember Barksdale, we'll start with you.
Thanks, Mayor. I had one clarifying question or sort of logistics ask. Is it possible for us to maybe go through again and just maybe raise our hands? I have all the ideas written down from all the council members to say which ones I support.
So what's your ask?
As we go around, if maybe each person summarizes and maybe we like raise our hand for each one or something to indicate.
Oh, oh, okay, all right. So before this comment on each. We'll go around again and let each person, and you didn't get to do your, your third thing, I just realized, so. We'll let each person summarize quickly and you don't have to if you feel like you were clear. But yeah, so go ahead and start with a summary for us. And add what you didn't get to put in.
Sounds good. So one was the racial equity that's Bellevue Center and Communities Color Initiative. The policy professional in the council office and where I would expect. I'm curious actually to see if there is anyone in current, like in our staff, existing staff that might be willing or interested in serving in that capacity. And then the third is adding language in the utilities objective, specifically saying identify opportunities for innovations that help improve system reliability and store marketing management. And this builds off of the comments I provided in a previous council meeting. About ways that we can maybe leverage innovative, innovative technology. And so the ask here is that we prioritize at least identifying those opportunities so that in future years, we. Have identified those opportunities that we could then take advantage of when we have funding. So.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you like to summarize your ask?
Sure, if needed, I mean, pretty straightforward, tag for the environmental stewardship initiative and then also funds for the BDA and the Bellevue Chamber. For the work that they're doing in the small business restaurant community. As they are experiencing the pandemic effects to their business.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, so mine were the Vision Zero, moving that up to 2021 to start. $50,000 so that the Bellevue College Connection can be added back to the CIP. The Growth Corridor, having 500,000 each year for three years instead of much less next year and then ramping up. And then for the environmental stewardship, having a, what was I calling that? A rapid action implementation or.
Rapid early win actions.
There you go, rapid early win actions. For $100,000 for each year and I would say from the standpoint of budget. Let's do that for the next two years as seed money so that we can then look for sponsors, investors and partners. And then in the mid buy, we could always take a look at whether we need to make some changes to that. So I think those were the ones that I proposed that were not already proposed by someone else.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. The, keeping the fire training admin with the BLS fee as the funding source.
Okay, and Councilmember Stokes.
I would propose $50,000 to the Muslim Community Resource Center and. Sophia Way.
Each or total?
Total.
Okay.
And I'll support the 100,000 for the cross cultural center. I'm not sure what you mean by your proposal to have a. Technical advisory committee to do that. So those are two different concepts, I think, right? Is that what you're thinking about is different from having the consultants continue?
We've already had the consultants and so this would be a technical advisory group to look at the consultant's recommendations and help us create. A preferred concept, come up with a preferred concept. The recommended citing ideas, scale of the cultural center, the goals, the purpose and a budget. That they could present as recommendations to the council. So move us forward, I think, faster.
Okay, I would support that as long as it's. It sounds like you've already made or suggesting the decision, what to do has already been made. I'm not sure that's accurate. So I would have a problem with that, but I think $100,000, that's why I think the consultants have not finished their job, but. We could have that conversation later. I think there are a lot of ways to approach it that would be, in some ways would be even better than what's been talked about. The concept is the, is the important thing and how we get there is another matter. Maybe the tech group could help, but we can think about that. And I support the. Councilmember Barksdale and Zahn's approach on the racial equity issue.
Okay, Councilmember Lee. Briefly.
Well, I talk about cross culture center. This one question for Councilmember Stokes. Question was still mentioned about Tatooi Chi Center, about our culture, arts and culture. This, I just want to, I'm curious. You know, if that's his understanding, this, well, the rest of the council member would say understanding. This is not just for arts and culture. It's not. Okay, so it's not equivalent to Tatooi Chi Performing Center. Okay, so it's very different. So I hope, you know, councilmembers still understand that.
Could I respond, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Sure, sure you can.
No, I, that's just an example. It's, it's, I understand that culture is a lot of things and I think. Culture, arts and culture is an important part of the, of the, of the diverse community. What I'm saying is, I think that the concept that of a big expensive. Very expensive to run building that is in one central place is not necessarily the best way to do this. I think there's a lot, what we're looking at is putting together a, really a collective action backbone. And maybe there are a number of venues, a lot of places to do different things. And I've been, you know, talking to other people in the community. So I'm just saying, let's keep open the option of how we, what we build. The, the objective is not to build a big, nice building. That, you know, maybe is used, it doesn't, and, and it really doesn't have the capacity to be more nimble in working with this. The concept is the important thing. And that's what I think needs to be studied more. So that's what I'm saying.
What I want to say is, you agree, there's not a predetermined idea of what's going to be. Right? But you're saying that it's not going to be this, or it's going to be that. Well, I don't know. Nobody knows. So let's leave it open.
Okay. Anything we do. What else, Councilmember Lee, did you want to say?
The other one I wanted to talk about the, you know, just to, I support Councilmember Robertson's. The restoring the fire training admin because I believe that it's important. It's a function that keeps our public safety, you know, that's number one. That's the function of a city and don't want to minimize it. And I think that environmental stewardship is a good idea. I think we need to put more attention. When you mentioned a tag, I'm not quite clear what this attack do.
We're not, we're not discussing it right now. We're just summarizing what we were, what our ask was, and I think you did that, so. I'm going to summarize mine now and then we'll go around and we can ask questions and we can make comments, okay? Are you done summarizing, Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to put forth the idea of creating a cultural center tag group, a technical advisory group. So that we don't, you know, the council does not have a preconceived notion of, because, ah, I can't talk, sorry. We don't have a preconceived notion of exactly what we want here, but we want to really have a broad community process. And we have so many people in the community who are very eager and qualified to be involved in making recommendations as to what this. Cultural center could be, what its purpose could be in our community and what the value would be. And so I would love to engage with the community and provide them the staff support that they need in order to provide us with a recommendation.
Can I ask you a question to clarify? Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. One question I have is that there are certain informational resources, because the staff may not have, the tag may not have. That might require consultants such as, you know, yeah, that can do some of the legwork, get information collected. You know, this is, we don't know, okay? So I don't want to narrow it down that after, especially you also mentioned after one year, when we get after one year. You know, the tag, whatever that is, they may not have the resources, the know how to get to, you know, explore the opportunities and possibilities.
They're going to have staff support, so they, they should have all the resources they need to at least make us.
The staff may not, because they don't have any funding to do that, that's why you get.
I'm proposing $100,000 to, to pay for staff support. That was my, my recommendation. And then my second recommendation is that we use $100,000 to create a racial equity tag group. And the money would pay for staff support for them to come up with what the, you know, what the purpose of their group would be. What the goals are and what they reckon, at the end of a year, the recommendations for our city. So that we can be looking at every aspect of our city and our administration to see that we have the racial equity that we want to have. And they can give us recommendations on how we can do better. So those were my budget asks. So we're going to go ahead and start with Councilmember Barksdale, give each person three minutes. I just want to try to get a consensus at the end of this conversation. You don't, you know, if you don't support somebody's idea, you don't have to tear it apart. You just don't have to support it. So we'll take support. From everybody and we'll start with Councilmember Barksdale. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I support the 50K to the MCRSC Muslim Resource Center and Sophia Way. The tag for the environmental, I don't remember the cost for the, the small business. So I'll come back to that one. Chair can answer, Councilmember Noonhouse can answer, Deputy Mayor can answer that one. Cross cultural center. Tag and for the, the cross cultural center tag and for the racial equity one, I think there's overlap between the two. Or at least I think the proposal from Councilmembers Zahn and I encompasses the 100,000 for the racial equity tag. And then the ESI Growth Corridor, Vision Zero and the Bellevue College Project.
Okay.
And the fire, and the fire training admin.
Okay. And is staff taking notes on this that they can read back to us at the end of this conversation?
We have, Mayor, we have the full list of all of your asks. I think this next section, as we try to figure out where everybody's at, will be a little more challenging, but we're going to, we're going to put it together for you.
Because I'm running out of paper here.
So am I, but we're going to, we're going to have a path here. I feel it.
Because I was not quite clear about Councilmember Barksdale's, you know. Conversation. It would be a good summary. Thank you.
Okay.
For my benefit.
Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Councilmember Barksdale, 40,000, so pretty, pretty modest request there. 20,000 to the Bellevue Chamber, then 20,000 to the Bellevue Downtown Association, one time only. For beginning of, of next year. I think the, the need there is very clear and they're playing an integral role during this pandemic, so. So thank you for your support on that. What I was going to say on the top of this is, these are so many good ideas and I wish we really could fund them all. They're, they're all important, they're, they're all part of what we've heard for the most part from, from our residents tonight, so. But some of the, some, some things I'm hearing for the first time tonight a little bit as well, so I feel like I need some, some additional. So I feel like I need some additional information as well. I think one such as the cross-cultural center has been around for quite some time. And it's great to hear that so much support for that amongst my colleagues. So that would be another one that I would support. Tags, yeah, there are three tags, the two that the mayor mentioned, which I believe was for the cultural center and then also for the racial equity. And then my request regarding the Environmental Services Initiative, a tag there. Again, that cost is still, I know the mayor was putting $100,000 on each of those, but Tony can follow up in terms of what that dollar figure might look like. And then, of course, the training admin for the fire department and using the BLS fees there. I think that's a no-brainer and we should move forward with that. And I think that was the, oh, and then the, and I'm sorry, I forget who mentioned the Vision Zero.
Councilmember Zahn.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn about Vision Zero, we support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. So I would say that I support the fire training admin. I support the MCRC Sofia Way. I want to understand the difference between the two proposals on the cultural center, cross-cultural center. One is a tag and one is actually advancing the cross-cultural center to a preliminary conceptual design, which actually takes designers, which are not part of the tag. So it's not clear to me whether these are two completely different proposals or not. And so, you know, to me, I think it's really important that we actually have experts that are designers and architects that can help bring the vision of the need and the programming into some concepts and some cost estimates and identify some locations, similar to what we did with the Aquatic Center. So if one of the proposals is to do that, I support that. And if within that a tag exists, then that's fine. I just want to make sure that I was really clear on that. I think it's important to have, have data. So the piece around looking at the utilities and putting some, some data and information in there, I think it's important. We just won a digital award. So it seems to me that the areas where we can do more around that is really important. I like the idea of Councilmember Barxdale too, about if on the senior policy professional, if there's already a staff member, then it's not actually adding more positions. Maybe it's repurposing someone who has a talent in this area for us to work on. I, I do have a question for Deputy Mayor. So on the, on the, on the support for BDA in chamber, I want to understand, so was this a need that they requested? Because $40,000 in $5,000 grants would be eight more small businesses that we could help. And so sometimes the organizations that are helping those communities want to see the dollars going to the community. So I'm just checking in to see if, was this something that was requested by BDA in the chamber? Or was this something that we saw that they have a budget gap? So I'm just trying to understand.
So specifically, no, the request was not made. However, they are facilitating many, many businesses, as I mentioned earlier, from, you know, applying for grants, applying for loans. I think the amount of work that they've done and the amount of money that they've brought in and to help those small businesses is, at this point, I'm not even sure we could calculate that. And clearly, look at their revenues have been hit quite dramatically, right? They're not able to have the same kind of events. Their membership numbers are probably not coming in. In fact, I know that for a fact, you know, there's not as many memberships coming through that door. So it's really twofold, right? It's their revenues dropping as well as the outstanding work they're doing to help our small businesses and our restaurant industry in Bellevue.
Yeah, well, thank you. I just wanted to understand. I know that, you know, when we've talked with East Side For All, they've chosen not to compete for grants so that the most grants are available to the people they're trying to serve. So just wanted to understand that. And then, I guess lastly, I'd like to understand a bit more about the cost of these tags, because if, if funding tags takes away from actually accomplishing the actions of ESI, then I would be concerned about making sure we're actually spending the money doing the actions versus creating more meetings. We could always have meetings, but actually having something brand new that we stand up takes staff time that they could be doing actually the actions. And the volunteers will be here whether we create a formal tag or not. So those were my, my questions.
Councilmember Zahn, I want to respond to your question about the cultural center tag. It wouldn't be a design review committee or anything like that. It would be more of a conceptual, concept creating committee that could outline what the goals of a cultural center would look, would be and where the potential sites might be, that they'd have to work with staff to come up with that. And the goals and the purpose and what a budget might look like to maintain a cultural center and to build a cultural center and to get a designer in. So it's kind of taking us to the next steps, because there's so many different ideas of, even on the council, of what a cultural center like this would be for, that I think that creating a technical advisory group and giving them the staff support would allow the community to weigh in much more and come up with a concept to present to us. Okay, so moving on to, oh my goodness, my notes are everywhere. Who's next?
I believe it's Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I know it's, there's a lot of ideas flying around. So, you know, I really can't go through tonight and say what I support and don't support, because I don't understand some of the concepts. I mean, some of them are easy, but I don't understand some of the concepts. I don't understand where the funding is going to come from. And so until I have that information, I can't really decide if it's something I support and if it's a prudent thing for us to do. So, I mean, and we have, I think there's at least three tags and a task force being recommended. So, and, you know, some new staffing or repurposing staffing being recommended. I don't personally think that we should bring in new staff to support the council when we're laying off staff in other departments. I don't think that would be very responsible. But I certainly want to make sure our council members have what they need to do our, to do our jobs collectively.
What are you referring to with that?
There, that was, there was, I think, a couple of recommendations for $300,000 for staffing, one of which would be a policy director level to staff the council. I just, I think that we, if we're laying off people because it's a down budget, hiring staff for us is not something I'm comfortable supporting.
Councilmember Barxdale, was that a request for staff for the council to advise the council or to support the council?
It was, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Go ahead.
I mean, I love it. We need more support staff, but I don't think this is the year. So, so I really can't comment because I don't understand it, but on a lot of these ideas. I also don't understand the impact of some of these, of moving money to the, to the year one or year two from the out years, if we can cash flow that. I need, I'm going to need input from Tony on that. I came into this meeting supporting the cross-cultural center. I like the idea of having a group of members of the public, especially interested members of the public, help engage in that. I'm wondering if that's something we can task the Parks Board to do, to do the outreach on, if they can hold special, you know, not special meetings in terms of not regular meetings, but if they can put focused meetings or workshops on, that might be a way to do that without having to spend more money. So I'm going to just really need to have information from staff. I, the BC project, I think, is really important, but, but I, we specifically cut that budget because our partners didn't have the money and we repurposed that money. That is still absolutely important to the city and as soon as our partners are ready to go, we're going to be ready to go. And it also might be a good one that we can get grant funding for. So I don't know that we need to put money next year for that one. We might put some money in the out years if we have it. But remember, unlike the federal government, our budget has to be balanced. So I need to see how it's all going to balance. And like I said, the only one that actually has a funding mechanism is the fire admin. So I definitely want to understand the racial equity task force versus tag. I think that what we can do as a council, it's, we don't have enough time between now and the end of the year to figure out all the details on how we're going to do this. But what we can do is we could say we want to reserve a little bit of money in the council contingency for this. Like, for example, I have in my head that we're going to be using some of the council contingency to move the Aquatic Center forward after next year, because it's funded through next year. So if we kind of have, have an agreement about, okay, we're going to probably use 100 or 150,000 for racial equity, we don't have to decide before we pass the budget what it is, because that money is appropriated in council contingency. It's, it doesn't get spent until this council says it can be spent. So we can then say, staff, bring back an idea on how we might use the racial equity, how we might, you know, use it with the diversity advantage, how we might do it, a scope, you know, give me a plan, a schedule and a budget. And then we can, when we see that, then we can make sure that it's what we want and then say, yes, use the money. So I think that we should approach a lot of these ideas in that way, you know, leaving the money reserved in council contingency, but figuring out exactly what it's going to be next year. So, because we just don't have the time and I don't understand a lot of what is being proposed. I know that staff's going to be working like beavers in the next two weeks to bring this forward. And I hope that every person who's advocating an amendment will work with staff to flesh it out to the greatest extent possible, so we can vote on it. But we don't have to vote on it. The money's in contingency. So I just wanted to reassure my colleagues of that, you know, we don't have to have all the answers right now. But I do need, we do need to have the answers if we're moving money, pulling it up, cutting something to fund something else, that we need to have answers. It does not require a budget amendment to spend council contingency. It just requires the vote of the council anytime, once the money's appropriated, which is in this budget, we have 2 million over seven years. So that is all I have to say. Thank you.
I think Mr. Miyake wanted to weigh in on some of the things you were talking about there. Mr. Miyake?
You're on mute.
I've gone, sorry about that. I was just wondering if it might be useful, there's lots of questions that are being asked about the different proposals right now. I'm wondering, we're taking the questions down. I'm wondering, we're, we're set to meet in two weeks on the 7th. If it might make some sense for us to get answers to the questions and get back to the council and have that in the pack for the June, I mean, the December 7th meeting. And then, and if there's additional questions, just feel free to contact Tony and we'll get answers to the questions, so you have the adequate information.
Yeah, I think, I'm hoping that staff gets enough information that they can draft an idea of what this would look like, that we're asking.
I think that one of the things we'll need to do is get clarity on some of the proposals from the council members, because some of them are actually similar to one another, but there's different, slightly different twists. So we need to make sure from the council members that each council member understands what the other is actually asking for.
Yeah, good point. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I, yes. Can I make a call-up comment that I forgot to make? So we're going to need to have, I think, on December 7th, we're going to need to have, at least in our desk packet, if not our actual printed packet, amendment language for every idea, which would describe where the money is coming from, how it's, you know, if there's going to be a cut elsewhere to fund it, et cetera, because otherwise we won't be able to vote on it.
Sure, that's right.
We're going to each need to work with staff to make that happen.
Right.
Well, that's the plan. And if we can't do it at that meeting, we'll do it at the following meeting. So. Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Well, as often happens, Councilmember Robertson and I have, kind of go down the same path sometimes. Maybe it's because we're both lawyers, I don't know, whatever it is. But I think she said it very well. I was just thinking about this. We're throwing a lot of things out here. Obviously, we're not going to vote on the budget on the 7th. So this sets it up to do exactly what has been suggested. We need to get the information where it comes from. And as we had, you know, discussed a little bit earlier in terms of the contingency, again, that's, that's there. So some of these things don't really have to be put in the budget this time. The concepts are what's important. So we can work around that. And I do think that we can look at the contingency in a much shorter term than is planned, because we're in a very unusual situation and we have things we need to move on. Hopefully budgets will be better, you know, a couple of years from now. And I think we have to look at it from that standpoint. We have some real, we have some real needs and opportunities now. And I think that's what's exciting. And all, a lot of these ideas are all very, very good. And so I agree, let's come back, get this, get questions answered, figure this out, figure where it's going to, you know, what the proposals are, where it could come from. And actually, most of the things we've been talking about are things that we probably should do. So let's get, get these pulled together, give us a couple of weeks to think about it and staff to work on it. And, you know, talk about it on the 7th and then vote the next time. And there is a little possibility of spill over into the next week, but that's all we're going to be working on is getting the budget passed. And so this may be a lot easier than, than we were thinking, if we really look at it in terms of the contingency and how some of these things relate to each other. So I'm actually feeling pretty positive about this, that we've had some really great ideas all put together. And I think it's hard to knock any of them out. But we can't do that. Again, as Councilmember Robertson said, you know, this is a lot of information to process. And sometimes you can make bad decisions if you do it too quickly. So I would suggest that what she said, we wrap this up. We've got the information and have staff work on this. And then on the 7th, have the discussions and maybe have it all figured out by then and move forward. But I think it's a very, very positive contribution to the work we're doing. And these, these discussions will have some very, I think, I think, strong impact, probably greater than the cost of them, which is good. So.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
I agree with the Councilmember Robertson. And the only thing is, I'm very disappointed that, you know, we didn't get to talk about all these great, wonderful projects soon enough, you know. You know, I mean, we waited for two weeks for us to actually last. And we do need to go through that. But my disappointment comes from the Cross-Cultural Center project. That project has been under books for four years and it's being studied, consultant study. We spend the money and where we are, you know, and I've been, I think the council, I don't know, should be aware of this and the staff have been working on it. And so, you know, I believe that it's in the position, in time, all the answers within this, you know, council members' thinking and the staff's consideration, the work has been done, has been answered. So my expectation and my hope was that we'll make a decision that the council contingency money will be used to make this happen in 2021. Because if it's required, 2022, hopefully it doesn't, you know, but it depends on the resources, you know, how soon can the staff get to it? And the last one is, again, four years later, then what's happened? And we still, you know, are put in the same category as all the other worthy projects. But no matter how worthy, how good a project is, it's got to go through the process. This one has been, this one has been done. And I have not heard anybody who said that, well, this doesn't have merit. It is in line with everything that we've been talking about, this whole evening. You know, I've been taking detailed notes, everybody who spoke. And, you know, yes, I support all the things that have been talked about, honestly, you know. But, Councilmember Robertson, correct, we can't do it. We don't have all the limited resources to do it. So, but, you know, but that's my frustration and that's my disappointment and I want to put it there. And I hope that everybody sees, understands, based on his merits, based on your understanding. If we don't, that's why we've given the time, opportunity to talk about it, to vet it. And so if there's still more misunderstanding. And so if there's still one misunderstanding, I'm a patient man, I'm willing to talk about it. But I'm not sure if the community, you know, they are watching us, they're looking at us. I don't know how long they will wait. And and anyway, so that's my end of my my statement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this has been a really good conversation for me. I came in with some ideas of things I wanted that I have now changed because having listened to staff and to my colleagues and things I'm not going to push for. But I do really believe that a cultural center tag is so important right now to combine all the ideas that people in the community have as to what this, the purpose of this facility could be. And I want, as Councilmember Lee said, we've spent so much time thinking about this and there's a real desire for it. I'd like to move on that. And with the racial equity tag, there are so many things that this group could address, so many recommendations and concerns that they could inform us on and recommend to us about. It, you know, racial equity permeates every single thing that the city does, whether it's public safety or affordable housing. I think Councilmembers on just listed off all the different ways that racial equity affects the work that we do as a city. And even with the the idea of a community court in Bellevue, that'd be a great thing for a group to weigh in on and see if that would be of best benefit to the residents of Bellevue. So I I think the time is now to act on that. I'm very in favor of moving funding into creating a group that can work. And, you know, I mean, obviously, we have to discuss the scope of what our goals are. But I'd also like to hear from the group what they think our goal, the goal should be and what the scope is, and our council can vote on that. So I'm not concerned about not having a clearly defined role yet of a group like that. I do like Councilmember Robertson's idea for restoring the fire trading admin using the increase in the BLS fee. And in terms of giving more funding to human service organizations, I felt really good after our meeting a couple of weeks ago when we voted to allow an extra funding cycle next year if we happen to have increased funds. And I think that that is how we can address the needs of the organizations that Councilmember Stokes mentioned and others that may emerge. And in terms of increased funding to environmental stewardship, I really, you know, we're going to get council quarterly updates, which we requested last our last meeting. I'd like to see how that goes first and and how we're doing and get input from the community before we just dive into creating another group. We have to, we've already done a huge body of work and I'd like to see how that goes for at least a quarter or two before we invest more money into that project. But and then I, as I said, I am very interested in advancing our Vision Zero and in our ped bike infrastructure. The time was yesterday to do that. I don't think we can do that fast enough for the safety of the people who do multimodal transportation and to support all the new employees coming into Bellevue, and they will be back, and I'm excited for that. But let's have some great infrastructure to support them. So I think I hit on all the things that I care about. And I think I saw Councilmember Stokes had his hand up at one point. And I'm going to put this on gallery view so I can see everybody. And if you have have a comment or a question, I see Councilmembers on. So I'll let Councilmember Stokes go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to address the Councilmember Lee's concern. I I might, I think there's a consensus to to move forward on this. And the only question is, what what vehicle do we use going next? So I think that's the discussion. So I'm not, I'm not worried about it, Councilmember Lee. I think we all agree that this needs to go forward. So I, again, I think that we we probably have consensus on some of these things, but picking this one out or the others out and everything is a little complicated now. And it's nine thirty, everybody's tired. And it, some of these, I think, we need to think about. I think we're, I believe, we're pretty much in consensus on a lot of these things. There's some pieces for it. So I would not suggest we take any kind of votes tonight.
Councilmember Stokes, we're not taking a vote, we're just trying to wrap up.
All right, all right, you you seem, you seem to be think, you seem to be saying, well, voter consensus. That's all, just responding to you, you were, I thought you were pushing, thinking about maybe on some of these things we should agree tonight. So I, that's all, that's fine.
Not at all.
Okay, all right, let's.
Yeah.
Proceed.
Thank you. Councilmembers on.
Yeah, I was going to say, I agree that we're not, I I would not support voting on any of these tonight. I think that we do have some of these that we need to align because it sounds like maybe the concepts are similar, but not exactly the same. So I would say that on the racial equity one, I'd welcome working with the mayor to align Jeremy and I's concept with what you might be thinking about as the incoming co vice chair of the National League of Cities Racial Equity and Leadership Committee. We have a lot of resources from there to look, do this work. And I would just really encourage my council members that if we're going to center the work with our BIPOC community, then please listen to us as we are trying to bring something to the council that we can show the commitment and a pledge to racial equity. And then the piece, Tony, with the funding on the Vision Zero and the Rapid Growth Corridor, I think that's another area where, you know, we had chatted about from a cash flow standpoint, what was possible. And I would say that if there's a way to look at a small haircut with some of the other CIP dollars to be able to bring some of these things forward in the in the next two years. I I do believe that a lot of these things are urgent and they can't wait. So ESI, for every year that goes by, we are not reducing our greenhouse gas emissions sufficiently to hit fifty percent by 2030. And I do think that that doing this work is important. We want to get the safety piece before we've got twenty five thousand Amazonians in Bellevue and so many more that are going to be out in walking, biking. So let's keep everyone safe. I just keep thinking about hero for zero, right? Or, yes, and let's be heroes here and keep our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or hands raised? Okay, my last one, I I forgot to comment on the idea of the chamber and BDA funding. My question was, there are businesses as well. Can they not apply for a small business grant as well to supplement all the funding that they have put out during this crisis for the small businesses? Jesse?
Hello?
Sorry, I couldn't find the unmute button. Yes, Mayor, they did actually receive grants from the last, the last program that the council authorized, the grants to community partners. So they both received funding out of that. And we will continue to work with them to identify other opportunities for them to search for grant money.
Okay, so I feel confident that they can apply, like all the other small businesses, for support from the state grant program. But I'm all in favor of expediting funding to our small businesses any way that we can. So I hope that staff will be looking at any possible way to do that. Okay, thank you very much. We are kind of pressed for time. We have an executive session at the end of this meeting. So we are going to delay our briefing on the expansion of the outdoor and on-street dining areas in Old Bellevue, except that it's such a good news story. I know, Brad, you're recommending that we do it the next meeting, but Jesse, do you, how much time do you need to do it justice? I don't want to rush you.
Thank you, Mayor. We would, to do the full presentation takes about fifteen to twenty minutes.
So it's, yeah, so we would all have to want to stay overtime for our exec session. Any hands up for people who want to stay later and put this in this meeting? I don't see it any, okay, sorry, Jesse, but I'm glad you were in on the meeting tonight to answer all our questions and then we'll get the good news update at our next meeting, okay? So we are going to go into a recess and we're not going to come back into public session until after our executive session. So we will adjourn after executive session, but we'll go into recess now. Councilmembers, in your last email that you received and on your calendar invite, there is a separate Zoom invite for the executive session. So you'll have to exit this meeting and re-enter on the executive session Zoom. And it is on your calendar invite. And I think Charmaine sent an email also, so it's in your emails. So we will see you in executive session, okay?
Mayor, this is Charmaine. If I could just identify, this is to discuss a matter of pending litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten, subsection one, subsection I. And it's approximately thirty minutes long.
Thank you, Charmaine. Okay, any questions? All right, we'll see you later.